Bennington, welcome to the Select Board meeting for July 27th, 2020. We are here by Zoom tonight, and before we start this meeting, I would like to ask the board members to go ahead and introduce themselves. Go ahead and start with your please, Bruce.
Hi, I'm Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
I'm Jeanne Connor.
I am Jeanne Jenkins.
Jim is muted, but Jim Carroll, let's see if I can unmute you.
Good evening. Minut- carry on.
Good evening, Sarah, Karen.
Can't remember if I introduced myself as Donald Campbell or not. If I failed to, I am Donald Campbell, and I'm the Chair of the Board. We also have with us tonight Stuart Hurd, our Town Manager. We have Dan Monks, our Assistant Town Manager. We have Cat TV, we have Nancy Lightley taking minutes. We have a couple of guests who we will introduce as the time comes. But before we start that, I have to read this brief statement that due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott pursuant to Addendum 6, Executive Order 1-20, Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting. However, the public may view it on Cat TV and call in at 1-646-558-8656, entering the meeting ID 830-5502-6666. And I'll put that up on the screen in just a minute. If technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done by a roll call vote in accordance with the law. So the first thing I'm going to do is to put up that calling information for you to jot down. If you know you want to call in, or if you think you might want to call in, please copy this down. The dial-in number is 1-646-558-8656, and the meeting ID is 830-5502-6666. You have to enter pound when prompted, and then you enter a second time. And you come into the waiting room, and we will enter people into the meeting from the waiting room in the order that they're received. If you call in at a time when we're in discussion and we're not at a point of citizen's comment, you may be in the waiting room for a little while, but we will enter people in the order that they've been entering the room. So there's the number. I'll put it up again a little bit later in the meeting. Okay, the first order of business tonight is the consent agenda. But before we get there, I'd like to take a minute to talk about our friend Bill Scully, who passed away very recently after a long, hard battle. And he took with him a lot of friendship because everybody that I know in this community had a tremendous amount of respect for him, had something in common with him, found him easy to talk to, and usually ended up learning something from him because he was a very smart, very ambitious guy. He was only on this board for a few months, but during that time, he really left a mark. He worked hard and dug in deep and challenged us on a lot of points in a way that was very welcome and, I think, very productive. So we send our mutual best wishes and love to his family. And please know that we are very thankful that he was a part of our community for a long time, and we're very, very sad that he no longer is. There'll be an opportunity for board members to speak further at the end of the meeting when we get to other business. But for now, we'll just say thank you, Bill Scully, and we hope you're doing great things wherever you are now. So the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. This is the minutes of July 13th, 2020, and the warrants circulated. I expect you all have had a chance to... The warrants are kind of gritty. Hopefully, you've had a chance to get any questions to Stuart ahead of the meeting, as is our custom. But if you have any lingering questions that you have not had a chance to satisfy with the manager, now would be the time to bring them up. And same with the minutes. For the purposes of discussion, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Some more.
Thank you, Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeanne. Okay, discussion. Jeanne, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I apologize, Stu. The bottom of page two, it's 32, 33, 31, is Daniel's Construction. And it's $175,000 and then $31,490 for Rice Lane Bridge. Is that PFOA work? Stu, you're muted.
Thank you. It was a flooding issue. The small stream has, for years, overflowed its banks at the very westerly end of Rice Lane where it comes into Madison Road. We worked with the state engineers and Daniel's Corporation to design what turned out to be a bridge over this stream, paid for principally by grant money from the bridge program. And then we also spent some of our reserves from bridges to finish the job.
Thank you.
Jeanne, I know you had one small comment on the minutes. You satisfied that with Nancy before the meeting. Okay, great. Any other comments on the minutes or the warrants as circulated? If not, I would ask you all to unmute yourselves. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay. Thank you very much. So the next order of business is to invite Kristi Cross to our meeting, and she's actually with us here. Sarah, would you like to introduce her? Are you... I'm putting Sarah on the spot here, but we are very thankful to have Sarah working both with the hospital and the opioid task force now with some of the Emergency Rescue Service. And Sarah's been doing a great job interfacing on those fronts. But Sarah, if you'd like to maybe just give us a 15-second introduction to Kristi?
Sure, sure. I see Kristi, and I see Alex in the background. So thank you. Kristi, this is Kristi Cross. She's the Director of Bennington Blueprint at SPMSC and Project Director of the Opioid Response Team Bennington. Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much for having me. And yes, Alex, six feet away behind me here. I'll introduce him in a little bit. So I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see it? Excellent. All right, so thanks so much for having me today to present on behalf of the Bennington Opioid Response Team. I'm going to be sharing a lot of information. So at the end of this slideshow, I do have my contact information if anyone has any additional questions. And also, in the room with me is Alex Figaroa. Alex is the Community Action Grant Project Supervisor, and he's also the Care Coordinator for Bennington Blueprint. So this first slide is our data on Vermont opioid-related fatalities. This is specifically for opioid-related fatalities by county of residence. I recognize it's a lot to look at, so I'll talk you through it. On the top is 2015 to 2019 data, and I have Bennington highlighted. And this is adjusted per population. And so 2015, you can see we're 5.5. And 2016, we were 16.6. 2017, 11.7. And 2018, we were 36.5. Quite a significant jump. And actually, we were second in the entire state for rates. And in 2019, we did decrease slightly to 30.9, but still a substantial number. And so in 2018, the Bennington Opioid Response Leadership Team formed, and we created our mission, vision, values, which are on the left-hand side, and we created our leadership team goals. Those goals revolve around our four pillars, which are prevention, treatment, recovery, and criminal justice. And so we provide governance, organization, financial support, and try to decrease duplication and increase coordination of efforts. And through this team, we already have several examples of those goals through the Rapid Access to Medication-Assisted Treatment in the Emergency Department, the Chirrime Services Program, and we welcomed a new spoke practice in 2018. All of those were seamless and collaborative because of the efforts of this team. On the right-hand side is our leadership team members. We're all community stakeholders. We have involvement by Bennington County legislators, and we have state and town support. In 2019, we developed a formal strategic plan and created subcommittees. Those subcommittees are Youth-Based Initiative, Behavioral Health, Recovery Housing, and Law Enforcement. And those are open to other community members to have involvement. The next two slides are going to show what we've been doing within our subcommittees. So this is our new subcommittee. I recognize a lot of information on this slide. We divided it into age-specific tactics and goals, with our primary tactic being the development of a youth resiliency project through a grant from the Vermont Community Foundation. We're actually really close to rolling out this grant, and the details will be out to the community soon. This is our Behavioral Health Subcommittee. We are advocating for increased funding for workforce development, establishing a hub in Bennington County as a tactic, increasing our spoke practice sites, and creating or participating in a recovery-friendly workplace program. We also have in bold and italics there information on the Community Action Grant, which I'm going to get into a little bit later. This is our Recovery Housing Subcommittee. For our tactics and goals with this, we wanted to find recovery housing, perform a community assessment, and recruit or develop a recovery housing program in Bennington. This is our Law Enforcement Subcommittee. We are split into focused populations, focusing on pretrial defendants, those released from incarceration, and across all the criminal justice populations. Our primary tactic here is to improve communication and coordination between the criminal justice system and treatment providers, really to increase care coordination and education across the transitions. And this is our Community Action Grant summary. So the Community Action Grant was awarded this year, and it's a part of a larger overdose data to action grant through the state of Vermont. The state of Vermont was awarded a $9.5 million grant called the Overdose Data to Action. And a part of that is the Community Action Grant, which will be distributed to four counties in Vermont with the greatest need. And Bennington was one of those. Our first year of funding is $175,000, and we anticipate $125,000 for year two. I listed our outcomes and our steps. We have already done step one, which is to develop a needs assessment, and we submitted that. We're on to step two, which is the project plan to address those needs in the needs assessment. And the strategies have to address the three priorities listed: overdose prevention, training, linkage to care, and enhancement of first responder. And then we'll have an evaluation. It's important to note that a community action grant cannot be used for direct support or expansion of services. So for example, we can't use this funding for recovery housing or to create a hub or to increase spoke services. And this is our Bennington Opioid Response Team's Community Action Grant Plan. This is in development. This is what we're working on. I wanted to give a picture of kind of where we're going with this. So we hired a half-time Community Action Grant Project Supervisor, and that's Alex. That's why he's here in case there's any questions. For priority one, we have two strategies, both involving education to the community and to the schools. Priority two is linkages to care. So for that intensive case management and incentives, we're building out an intensive case management incentive program where there's potential incentives to folks to keep them engaged in treatment. Strategy B is care coordination and clinical education. We're going to have an MAT liaison RN who is going to be able to help patients and providers navigate the needs. Strategy three is transportation and telehealth for MAT services. And so we know that transportation is a significant barrier for this population. And so how can we be creative with our strategies to improve transportation access? And with COVID-19, a lot of regulatory changes have taken place where MAT services, like counseling, have transitioned to be telehealth. And so how can we enhance those telehealth, ensure folks have the resources they need to access telehealth? And priority three, we have two strategies: increased utilization of ODMAP. ODMAP is Overdose Detection Mapping Application Program. Surprise I got all that out. And it's a great program that actually provides data on non-fatal overdoses. We have relatively good data on fatal overdoses, but not on non-fatal overdoses. They often go underreported, and this is because of an increased access with Narcan. And it's important to know the data on non-fatal overdoses to recognize what is happening in our community. And then strategy B is a first responder engagement. We're working on a strategy to encourage follow-up care after an overdose and then to provide wraparound, ongoing support for recovery. This will be through a memorandum of understanding between first responders, United Counseling Service, and Turning Point. And we're pretty close to finalizing that. And then lastly, I wanted to show preliminary data on 2020. And this is our opioid-related fatalities for Bennington. We have not seen a surge in fatal overdoses, but we do have anecdotal evidence of an increase in non-fatal overdoses. And one of the concerns is that experts often call the opioid crisis an epidemic of isolation. And so with COVID-19, we're now increasing isolation. And so there's substantial concern and actually an expectation that we will see an increase of substance use and an increase of opioid-related deaths. So the continued efforts of the Opioid Response Team and our community partners are critically important to our community. And we continue to persevere through COVID-19. It's definitely been difficult and challenging, continuing to work, especially the work on the Community Action Grant. But we continue to do it. We know it's important to the community. And then this is my contact information for folks to reach me if you have any additional questions. If you want to be a part of the Opioid Response Team Subcommittee, that's certainly open to folks, and I will certainly respond to any questions.
Thank you, Kristi. That's a great summary of where you are. You know, I think we all know that COVID's been hard on everybody in some ways, and certainly hear a lot in the news about how hard it is on people with drug addiction. And so it's at least somewhat good news to see that fatalities have not skyrocketed during this period of time. But it's interesting what you say about the numbers being affected somewhat by the development of Narcan. So one of the things that occurs to me, I'll take questions from the board in just a minute, but we've had a couple of presentations over the years about the opioid crisis. And one of the few things that it feels like the Select Board could really be helpful in trying to help figure out is not by ourselves, but as part of a partnership, maybe try to figure out some recovery housing, which seems like a really important step. So once people are able to get through drug addiction and are recently through it, there's, I guess, quite a high potential for relapse, especially if you can't find good housing and you can't find a job. And so transitional housing seems like something that could be one of the best things we could do to help people, give people a hand getting integrated back into the into the community in a way that's satisfying for them. So I don't know what you think about that. The housing question went by pretty quickly, but that does be, that's one of the places I have a personal interest in wondering if there might be some way that our community could be doing more on that front.
Yeah, it definitely is one of our subcommittees. We have done site visits with other recovery housing organizations throughout the state. There's several available. And I think the challenge is finding a recovery housing that's certified to be recovery housing to come to Bennington. We have been in touch with one that is up north and rapidly expanding throughout the state. V4 is the acronym, and I apologize, I cannot remember the full name of them, but they've been in contact and do plan to eventually come down here to Bennington. That's not to say that we couldn't develop our own recovery housing down here. The Vtar has recently released information that allows that certification to be considered recovery housing. And so that information is available to us. I think the important thing to do is define what recovery housing means in Bennington because the word recovery housing, it has several different definitions. And then we need to assess our wraparound services because the intent of recovery housing is to deliver the services for folks that are in the housing. And if we don't have all the resources that we need, that they need to be delivered, that's definitely going to set us up for failure with the recovery housing.
Yeah, yeah, great. I'm glad that's all being thought through. And I would invite, you know, I would invite particularly that committee to have further interactions with the Select Board as things evolve. Seems like one of the things we can do for our people who are working hard to make a go of things. Jeanne, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Kristi. Your presentation was really educational for me. First thing I was wondering, can you email us the presentation? Because I'd like to really read it a little bit more carefully, so that would be great.
Absolutely.
Let's see. Oh, I don't remember what organization it was that came to speak with us, but they were family members of people that had issues with addiction, some of which their family members had died. And a lot of them spoke about recovery housing is obviously needed, but it really needs to be long-term. You know, it's not a couple of weeks, and everything is going to be wonderful. It really was, you know, months, a year possibly. So I'm assuming that you're in agreement with that. And I just wanted to make a comment. Your presentation for me really highlighted how addiction affects every part of someone's life. You know, housing, you know, just going down a list. It's all-encompassing, and there's no magic bullet. You have to take care of every single part of that person's life if they're going to be successful. So anyway, thank you so much for all the work and all the work the whole team is doing. It's not easy, I'm sure, but it is so necessary and so needed. So I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeanne. And I think you're talking about the fed-up ladies that probably presented that. And so I am in connection with them, and I do routinely send them updates.
Donald, you're on mute.
Okay. My turn to be on mute. Jeanne Jenkins, and then Sarah.
Thanks. I was trying to decide if I had frozen or if you were on mute. So Kristi, that was a really informative presentation. And I was really happy to hear that the group is working on advocacy for workforce, funding for workforce development. Can you talk a little bit about what, I mean, is that in supporting legislation? What form does that take?
So I think that really comes in the form of having the legislation involved and, you know, just being connected to the work that is happening out there. Beyond that, there's nothing specific or formal related to it. I think we're just being loud about it, that we need it.
Well, and I think that's good. And I think to Jeanne's point, that if we want to really make a dent in this, we're going to have to look at it from a lot of different angles.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jeanne, go ahead. Sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Kristi. I just wanted to see if you could back off like quite a bit and just explain the hubs and spokes quickly?
Sure. Oh, you're going to ask me that question? I never have a good way of explaining it. So Vermont has a really unique model of a hub and spoke. And so, and actually, it's naturally known and attempted to be replicated in other states. So we should definitely be proud that we have that model here. And so the hubs are intensive medication-assisted treatment. And medication-assisted treatment involves counseling, behavioral health supports, and medications. So that's methadone, ibuprofen, medications like that. And so the hubs are intensive and more for like a higher level of need for folks that are new to treatment and oftentimes require a daily trip for their medications and, you know, frequent behavioral health sessions. And then the spokes, which if you think of it as a wheel, the hub is the center and the high-intensive treatment, the spokes go out to primary care practices that participate in the spoke program. Or we also have specialty care practices or specialty spoke practices. Some of them are referred to as super spokes, where all they do are medication-assisted treatment, but they're not at that high level of a hub. And so we here in Bennington have five spokes, and our closest hub is either in North Adams or it's in Rattleboro and Rutland. So it's quite a drive for folks. If you think they have to go every day when they first start with treatment through a hub, they are having to travel every single day at least 40 minutes to North Adams. Did that answer your question?
It did, yes.
I gotta get an elevator speech to explain that better.
And what is the average age range if yours one?
That I don't know. You know, honestly, I think it would probably be quite surprising to get the variety of age ranges.
Kristi, we have a number of people in the waiting room. I don't know if they're waiting for other topics. It's tricky with Zoom meeting, knowing when to call in and when to be in the waiting room. There's one call, there's one number I don't recognize. And so I'm going to admit that caller and just ask them if they if they have a question for you. They may be on for a different topic. So if you would be willing to put the screen down, we'll go back to the full-screen mode. And I'm going to admit caller ending in 797. We're talking about the Opioid Task Force update at this point. So caller ending in 797. If you could hear me, please turn down the volume on your computer at this point, and I'll unmute you, and we'll see if this is the right place to hit you into the meeting. So welcome, welcome to the Select Board meeting caller ending in 797. Are you on for the Opioid Task Force update? No? Okay, maybe not. All right. I'm going to put that caller back in the waiting room. And Kristi, we have a lot of questions we could ask you. I think maybe we need to not do that right now just because we have a very long agenda tonight. But it is good to get a little pulse on where we are in the community. It's really nice to hear what you're working on. We have our full support, and we hope you'll do more and more of this kind of work. It's a brutal, it's a brutal addiction, and I'm really glad that you're working on it. So thank you for that. I'm sure the other board members feel the same way. But maybe we could come, we could check in with you again later on this year and see how the community is doing. Does that sound all right?
We'd love to.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yep, have a good evening. So we are going to move on to our next agenda item. This is a Black Lives Matter street mural. And there are two presenters that I'm going to admit into the waiting room here. They are Cynthia Taylor and Mary Garrish. And Cynthia and Mary, I'm going to give you just a minute to turn down the volume on your computers so that when I enter you in, there's not a whole bunch of crazy feedback. But we'll get you into the meeting at this point. And so we now have Cynthia Taylor and Mary Garrish in the meeting. I'm going to unmute first Cynthia Taylor and I think Mary Garrish as well. Or maybe I, maybe I've just requested you to unmute yourselves. Anyway, welcome, welcome to the meeting.
Hello, thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us at this meeting. We have a proposal that we are really excited to present. excited to present. Um, I'm just going to summarize, and then I'm gonna ask Cynthia, who is one of our artists involved, to uh share her screen and explain the artistic aspects of the project. And then I would like to come back and um give a couple of observations about why I think this is a good idea, and to briefly answer what I, what I think are some, what I anticipate are some questions that people might have. Um, so this project was conceived by a group of folks in the community, artists and black, indigenous, and other people of color, as well as LGBTQ A plus people in the community, all of whom felt that this was a really important thing to ask the town to support. And it has to do with the street mural, and since Cynthia is speaking for the artist contingent, because I am unfortunately not an artist, I will uh, at this time, ask Cynthia to present her portion of the presentation.
Cynthia, I have made you co-host, and it should be, you can share your screen at this point.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm maybe a little, I'm prepared to share my screen, so if you give me just one second, I'll dig up my materials. Um, hopefully you folks have seen mockups of this already in your packets.
Cynthia, I can put it on my screen. I have it ready to go if you'd like.
Yeah, that's great.
That'd be helpful, okay.
Sure, that'd be very helpful. Thank you. And so this is the mockup that we've created. Um, the design uh is the result of, of several meetings of the group of interested artists and activists who, who wished to, to do this. So this, this was a collaboration between all of us. Um, we had originally hoped to place it in front of the police station, but we've been asked to consider placing it in front of the town offices, like you see in this mockup here. Um, we are gonna use street paint, uh, paint that we would use to paint the street, and as a group, we all pledged to keep it maintained. In other words, if it's defaced or damaged in any way, we'll come back and fix it. Um, we also understand that we need to respect all lines and markings in the road.
Yeah, Cynthia, if I could just jump in for a second, one of the, you know, one of the reasons to have it moved to the side, and I'll let the town manager speak to this in just a minute, is, has to do with, yeah, road, road signs and just where there's enough space to put it. So this seemed to be one of the largest, biggest open, most open spaces.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd love to hear more about how you came up with this design. It is somewhat reminiscent of the one that was uh, went down in Los Angeles and I think other places around the country.
Yeah, I was definitely inspired by the Los Angeles mural. It was important, we, it was originally conceived of during LGBTQ a month, so we wanted to kind of combine the message of both the LGBTQ community and also the Black Lives Matter, which is why we chose all Black Lives Matter plus the rainbow flag, plus the trans flag are all represented here. Um, and then we felt important that, it was important that we put a local spin on it, which is why we added the monument where the I and lives is, and then I just added the Green Hill underneath because I felt like it brought the entire design together. So that's a brief on the, on the color choices, the wording, and the symbols that we placed in the design, in the proposed design.
And, and maybe this is a good time, if I might, for me to talk a little bit more about the wording. So when the, when this appeared in LA, there was a lot of question about why the word "all" was in front of Black Lives. And I know people have asked our committee the same thing. And I don't know if you can see it on the screen share, but in the middle of the A is the trans fist. Um, and the reason that Black Lives Matter incorporated the "all" in it is because people that are, are LGBTQ A plus, particularly trans people, have been subjected to just horrific violence by our system, by different police, and by the government. And the Black Lives Matter movement wanted to specifically make sure that all those folks were included, so it was all Black Lives Matter. Then the other thing that I know we hear a lot of is, well, don't all lives matter? Well, of course, all lives matter. If all lives didn't matter, nobody's life wouldn't matter. But I wanted to give a sort of, both an historical perspective on that slogan, and then an analogy. So historically, our country and our government and our system has used the word "all" in our frigging documents, right? The Pledge of Allegiance, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and it says, "Freedom for all." But guess what? When those were written, when, when those were written, "all" did not include black. It didn't include indigenous, and it didn't include people of color, because those folks were either slaves or savages moved out to a reservation, or indentured servants. So "all," historically, in the context of our government, has not included these marginalized groups. So the focus here is to make sure that "all" in the future does include that. And perhaps a useful analogy would be for us to look back on various, on something that's not political, at least I don't think it is, um, various ecological frameworks, okay? I'm sure everybody has heard of the Save the Whales movements. So Save the Whales did not mean, "We don't need dolphins, we don't need shrimp, we don't need tuna, other fish aren't important." What it meant was, we're in a state of crisis right now, and we're in a state where, where the whales are, are so marginalized that we've got to do something. It doesn't mean that the other sea life doesn't matter. It means that we need to maintain the balance of the ecosystem. So what we're trying to portray here is that we need to maintain the balance of a system of government where "all" means every human life and every human being being able to live a dignified life. And, and the other thing we thought about this, it's a real, I think it's a win-win situation for everyone, because first of all, any of the folks in our color, in our, of color in our community who have felt marginalized, this is a tangible demonstration of the town's support for their demographic. Not to say we never made a mistake, but to say, we're out there trying. The other thing is, I think that it would be reassuring to people seeking to move to Bennington, particularly whether they're professionals or, or um day workers, because as we know, folks of color are frequently hesitant to move into a new community if they think that they're going to continue to be marginalized. This is at least an outward symbol, and we've got a lot of inward work to do too. But it's at least an outward symbol of the town's support for all of those folks. It won't cost the taxpayers anything, because the paint is being donated. Wonderful artists like Cynthia are willing to do the outlines. The community, and we already have many, many volunteers, will do the actual painting. The paint itself will be donated. So this is not spending taxpayer money just to ease any of the public concerns that might be out there on that. And what that is doing is giving Bennington a unique perspective on this phrase, because it does have the Bennington Monument, and it does have the Green Mountains. Um, so I really feel as though, once we're done with COVID, it may even attract tourists to the town, because this has become a popular thing for folks to take pictures and post on social media of street murals. That being said, as Cynthia said, we plan to do any repair that needs to be done. Um, we'll work out with the town to have somebody's phone number, where whomever from the town can call that person and say, "There's some damage to this," and that person will call the rest of the team, and we'll be right there to fix it. So um, I hope that answers some of the anticipated questions. Um, and I will, and Cynthia, unless you have something else um you wanted to say right now, maybe we can take questions.
Um, I did want to add one more thing about the actual execution.
Oh, yeah.
I, when it, it, you know, if the, if the plan is approved, what we would like to do is choose a time, most likely in the evening, whether it be minimal traffic, minimal disruption, kind of make it a little bit of an event. I'd like to maybe put up lights, invite some musicians, have a little food, and, and bring volunteers in to hopefully get it done within a, a pretty short time window, like one evening, say four hours, something in that realm. So that it's done quickly, it's not a disruption to traffic, and make sense there. So I just wanted to add that about the actual execution of the plan.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Um, Maria and Cynthia, uh, thank you for this presentation. Don't go away, please. I wonder if it might be worth pulling in students just for a minute to talk about the, not symbols of these things, the logistics and parking and street uh paint and things like that. Stuart, can you give us a minute of your time on that, please?
Uh, sure. Um, initially, when, when this was first proposed, of course, uh, Route Seven is an interstate highway, uh, and it's considered a Class One Town Highway. So I reached out to the state of Vermont. Their response with guidelines is in your packet. Uh, and they, they talk about um not interfering with, with street, necessary street markings, not interfering with uh turn radiuses and things like that. And it, it struck me that the town offices is the seat of government. Uh, I think it's appropriate, if we're going to allow this, for it to be there. Uh, this happens to be out of the traveled way, uh, so it should minimize the amount of uh damage due to wear and tear. Uh, and it also makes it, I think, a little easier for it to be installed, uh, because you're not having to close off the entire street. You probably have to limit it to one lane uh while this is going on, but certainly uh, I think this, this location makes a lot of sense, um, and it uh should be uh something that is easily installed, um, and uh easily maintained.
Okay, um, thank you for that. I'm going to put this down just for a minute. I can bring it back up if, if people uh need to see it, but I need to be able to see the waiting room here. So I've got one hand up from a board member. Uh, Jim, go ahead. Have you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this goes to Stu, and uh, I think you're probably aware of uh the different uh episodes around the state where uh the Black Lives Matters uh, street paintings have been damaged. And I wonder if we can um spend a few bucks and uh put some cameras on uh desks to prevent uh the, the, the damage that, you know, has, has occurred, not only uh in the state, but around the country.
Uh, that's a good question, Jim. I, I don't have an answer for you.
Get one. I mean, there, we, there may be cameras already that can access this point, uh, but I'll have to check on that.
Okay, I'm gonna think about, hate to solve a problem we don't have, but it, it would be nice to um, would be nice to prevent vandalism. Uh, next up is Jean Tanner.
This is really pretty. I mean, I, I love, I love everything about it. Um, and I, I'm wondering, um, I mean, it's clear that a tremendous amount of thought went into this design, and it, it really shows. Um, and I'm wondering if someone, your, your presentation tonight was so informative, it'd be really great if you wrote it up, you know, not as a formal document, but it'd be really, really great if people could read why you chose the colors and what the symbols mean, and, you know, the rainbow, you know, trans colors. I, I, I think that would be really interesting for people. We could probably put it right on the town website. Um, because I certainly, I didn't, I didn't know the symbol in the letter A. I'd never seen that before, so I'm sure I'm not alone. So that would be really great if, if someone would be willing um to do that.
Cynthia, we can do that, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. I'm a writer by trade, so I'm always happy to take writing assignments. And you're right, that's an excellent suggestion. I think it would help um create respect around the piece, to have that explanation. So, and I also did like the suggestion of cameras, and I, and I like the idea of maybe saying, "Smile," you know, "You're on camera," to let people know if they're thinking about defacing it, that they'll be watched.
Jeanie?
Hi. Yes, so is, is this gonna be across both lanes or just one lane on the road?
One lane.
One lane, okay.
Um, and let, let me, uh, let me clarify just a little bit. This is not even going to be in a travel lane. It's meant to be in what would normally be a parking area, but is designated as no parking. So it's not even really a travel lane.
Okay, so would the placement is actually where it would be?
Mm-hmm, yes.
On, oh, okay, okay.
Where it would be on the street. I mean, it's a little bit guesstimated, but yeah, along the front of the town offices and what would normally be designated as parking area. You can see over to the left a little that there are some parking spaces outlined.
Mm-hmm, okay.
This is a no, a no parking zone, so.
Okay. Well, that may also cut down on potential vandalism, just.
Yeah, and it won't be in a travel lane so much, so it won't get worn down by tires passing over it.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. Okay, so that, and then that makes more sense, why you were not as concerned about um needing to block off the road. Got it. Okay. And then um, I love the idea of having the community um participate in, in this and really making it a festive, a festive time. Um, so um, Donald said, and COVID concerns aside, because I can, I, I can just see your head spinning. Um, uh.
Social distancing and masks, of course.
Yeah. Um, uh, how can the town help make sure that people that want to be involved are involved, and it's, you know, orchestrated in a way that's gonna be safe, so that if you do end up with, you know, two hundred people from the community wanting to take part in this wonderful occasion, that um we don't end up being a COVID hotspot?
So um, as Cynthia said, it would involve social distancing and masks, and the reason actually for the, the idea of having the music and perhaps refreshments as well, which would be, of course, separate bottles and separate bags and all that kind of stuff, um, would be that it wouldn't be, not everybody would be able to be painting at the same time because of the social distancing. So it would be sort of an assignment of, you paint this part of the A, your kids paint that part of the I, you know, that sort of thing, and on and on. And meanwhile, while you're waiting for that, you can stand and watch the progress, enjoy the music, and social distance with masks with your community. If, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's lovely. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to just.
We also have in the queue Bruce, and then Jim. Uh, and we, I may see if this caller that we entered before is calling to comment on this. So we do need to keep this uh item moving along, as exciting as it is. So uh, but let's go ahead with Bruce, and then Jim.
Well, I, I'm wanting to move the process, so I'm, I'm wondering if a
Well, I, I'm wanting to move the process, so I'm, I'm wondering if a motion is in order to approve the proposal with taking into account all of the comments that were made tonight regarding, you know, celebration and regarding possibility of cameras, et cetera, et cetera. Is that, is such a motion in order?
Or for you to make a motion anytime you like, Bruce.
Oh, come on, that's not always the case.
But does that cut off public discussion?
I don't think it does.
My preference would be to enter this one caller first before you make a motion, but.
I'm happy to wait. I'm happy to wait, but.
Right, why don't you hold that thought? Jim, go ahead, and then we'll enter caller ending in nine seven, in seven nine seven.
Okay, a question for Mary and Lynn. Considered, or asked any paint dealer, if they'd be willing to donate the paint? And if, if you haven't asked, I would be happy to. Yes?
Oh, thanks for your help, but yes, we have.
Okay, and they, they've donated?
They, well, they think that they, they're going to, we haven't given them the actual specifications yet of the paint. If not, we also, Branded Rights and Democracy Institute will also donate funds if we need them, so that's the education we, Branded Democracy.
Well, Mary, if I can help, let me know.
Thank you, Jim, I sure will.
Okay, so Bruce, we have three callers in the waiting room now. So are you still happy to hang in there while I see who, what people have to say?
Happy as, as always, so long as we eventually approve the proposal.
So caller ending in seven nine seven, I've entered you into the meeting, but you are muted at this point. I would ask you to turn down the volume on your computer or your TV, and we will unmute you and enter you into the meeting. So caller ending in, caller ending in seven nine seven, you're in the Bennington Select Board meeting, are you here to comment on the street mural?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please give us your name and tell us where you live, and then tell us what your comment is.
I live in Bennington, my name's Aisha.
Tell us your last, what's your last name, Aisha?
Dawson.
Okay.
So I have a, on the mural, so I saw in the mural that you are representing, you know, the Black community, the transgender, the gay community and all that, but what, what about everybody else? I'm a conservative, I'm a gay conservative with a Black girlfriend. And we're not, we feel though that you're leaving out a big part of the community by doing this.
May I respond to that? So, Aisha, thank.
Before you do, Mary, before you do, let me just say, thank you for your comments, and I'm not going to kick you off the line here, Aisha. Stay on the line if you like, and we'll, we'll let the presenters address that comment, and then if you have further questions, you may ask that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Aisha, thank you for your comment. And certainly, as I said before, we do not want anyone to feel left out of this. I happen to be Lakota, and as you may or may not know, Indigenous peoples have been subject to slaughter for centuries, to put it bluntly. I will say that all of the tribes and all of my cousins, which includes people in different tribes, because we're all related, support Black Lives Matter. And they don't support it because they think it excludes them, or because they think it excludes anybody. They support it because currently we're in a crisis situation on this, both for Black lives and for LGBTQA+ lives. And as I said, Lives Matter has always been all, but all usually only included whites. And that's why this language is chosen. I hope that helps a little.
So, can I speak, or?
Go ahead, Aisha.
So my thing is that I've seen around the country where people that have a span of that All Lives Matter have gotten beat up, have been shot. And I, I was born and raised in Bennington. I, my grandparents brought in, we did the Fresh Air Fund, I don't know if any of you know what that is. From three months old, I, I had an African American as an uncle. I, and you know, when people say, well, you don't see color or this or that, like, and then it's like, well, you're, they're colorblind or this or, I, I don't understand what people are saying by that, because I've never, I was never brought up like that in Bennington. There were so many families. And my girlfriend has lived here for 10 years and has not been pulled over for 10 years. I'm not for the Black, the VLM movement. Do I believe Black Lives Matter and transgender and all that matters? Yes, I do. Even I'm a conservative, but I, I, I want them to have their rights, but I also want to have my rights. I'm, you know, but I feel as though like you, and the fifth and the A, I think it's the A, how I see that is, you know, like, there's people saying like Black Power, you know, like people used to say the other one. And, you know, like, I, I just think that if you're going to do something like that, like maybe take out the best, because that, when I see that, that's how I feel, is like, what I'm seeing around the country with all the riots and everything. And it's like, you put that up, and then they even did it in Portland, and there's on what, 60, 50 or 60 days of riots, and they even put Black Lives Matter on the street fair.
So thank you, Aisha, and I, and I really appreciate your concerns and your comments. It's a very scary time, and nobody wants riots or violence, I assure you. I also forgot to mention earlier during the presentation that what we have done is we have a couple of different possible methods to have, to have communities discussions about these kinds of concerns, so that we each understand where every other person is coming from. And the hope is that ultimately, we can celebrate our diversity, whether it's our diversity of opinions or anything else. And we can do it by restorative circles, which Rachel Blumenthal and Alyssa Daultufo have agreed to facilitate. We can do it by public forums on Zoom these days. So I think you bring up good points, and we hope that we will be able to address all of those, and thank you very much.
I think it should, I think it should be, no, a community decision, not a select board decision. Yeah, probably after signing.
Thank you for your comments. They're brave and, and obviously heartfelt, so thank you very much for engaging in this. I, I don't want to rush them off here, but I have a couple other people that want to get in on this. Would you, do you feel like you've expressed yourself at this point? Is it okay for me to move on?
Yep.
Okay, well, listen, thanks again for joining the meeting. We, we, we hear you, and we'll, we'll keep this in our minds. So I'm going to enter another caller at this point. I'm going to enter caller ending in five five nine. I've just entered you into the Bennington Select Board meeting, and welcome. I have not unmuted you yet. I ask you to take a moment to please turn down the volume on your computer or your television, so that we don't have any feedback when I unmute you, which I will, which I will do right now. So caller ending in five five nine, you are in the Bennington Select Board meeting. If you can hear me, please give us your, your full name, and tell us where you're from, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, I'm Jason Lilly, I live here in Bennington. And from reading your agenda tonight, just wondering what the process is to get these kind of murals put around town on other streets, such as Pro 2A, Make America Great Again? I mean, this here, I don't believe represents the majority of the town, because if you look at social media and look at the comments, the majority of it is not what the townspeople all want. And I think we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit, putting this on pavement.
So, you know, that's a perspective, I, I'm not sure I would ever grant that social media speaks for a community, but, but I, I do understand your point. Other, any reactions that anybody would like to make to that?
I just want to say that I think social media is great, because people can express their opinions, but it also depends on your audience. So if you're, as they say, preaching to the prayer, like, you're interacting with people who all have the same opinion or mostly have the same opinion, you may not always get the other perspective. So I'm not, I'm just saying, you may not have been hearing the people who are in favor of it. And the other thing is, I don't see how it could possibly lead to a lawsuit against the town. Perhaps you can elaborate on your thoughts about that.
Um, I guess that.
I guess it would be less productive, Jason, to go to spend a lot of time on the lawsuit thing. Honestly, I think that's, that's something that's been worked out in communities, but, but.
Okay, what's going on?
The point that is maybe a little bit more interesting is, what's the process, and maybe this is what your question was, what's the process for somebody that wants to do street art, and how, how is that process fair, fair or at least understandable to the communities? Is that a fair summary of your, of your main point?
Uh, yeah, because, I mean, as a supporter of what other people may not like in town, how do we come to this board and get them to put something on the street that we want? I guess there's a candidate for governor now that wanted to put Injustice For All or something in Montpelier, and they got met with having to paint back over the Black Lives Matter up there. So, you know, I think this is pushing us through really quick, to just come up and hear about this in the last week. You guys making a decision tonight, I think you should hear some more of the townspeople before you guys vote on this, because I think you're going to be surprised at the amount of support that you don't have. Yes, you do have people that in effect that are passionate about it, but you have also people that are passionate that the other side is not having this in our town. If you look at the riots across the country, it also has another meaning to it. So that's my opinion, and I, I think pushing this through so fast is going to have repercussions.
Thank you. Nancy, were you, Nancy Lively, were you able to get the caller's name? I, I know they go by kind of fast. I got it, but I, I just wanted to make sure you, you're all set.
Her name was Jason, but I'm not too clear on the last name.
I think it's Lilly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, okay, well, interesting point, Jason, thank you for bringing that up, and, you know, Stuart, you may have a response for that or not, but Jason, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank you for that point, we, we'll take it all under consideration, I'm gonna thank you for that point, if, if that's all right, and move on to the next caller, is that okay?
Are you, are you still here?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying that the process and having you go through so fast, I think is the possibility of, you know, adverse actions towards the townspeople. Thank you for taking the call, and I'll leave.
Move to the next caller. Thanks for calling in, yep, appreciate that, Jason. It does, you know, Mary, it does, but, you know, there's a little, little bit of truth and everything, and, and one of the things that's hard for us, of course, is not hearing from Black and Brown people on this, on this proposal. I know they're, they're speaking indirectly through you, but I think that maybe is one of the slight difficulties for us, as we try to listen harder and harder. That's certainly.
I understand what you're saying. I, I am Indigenous, so I am part of that BIPOC group, even though I probably don't look at, so people are probably saying, what's she talking about? But anyway, but there are a lot of, there were a lot of people and are a lot of people of color who are Black and Brown involved in this proposal, and who have already signed up to paint the mural, I might add. That doesn't mean they're willing to speak out in public about it, and that's unfortunate, but I'm hoping that in the future that will change. That's all I can tell you.
We have another caller that I'd like to make room for here, caller ending in nine eight one. So I have admitted caller ending in nine eight one into the meeting. And caller, I'd ask you to take this minute to please turn down your television or your laptop, your computer, whatever, however you're listening to Cat TV, so that we don't have a feedback problem when I unmute, which I will do right now. I know there's a lag on Cat TV, and that can make it confusing. So caller ending in, this is the Bennington Select Board meeting, if you called in to comment on the street mural, please give us your name and tell us where you live, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, this is Trucca, I live on Stonehedge Drive, and I would like to weigh in on the street mural.
Hi, Audrey, Audrey, welcome. Go ahead and give us your thoughts.
All right, thank you. I believe it is regrettable that a state which prides itself on its rural landscapes and even on billboards in order to preserve the breathtaking beauty that surrounds us, has given temporary permission to political expression in the form of rose graffiti. And I understand that that's a state decision that I disagree with. But just because we've given permission does not mean we have to take advantage of that. I think the placement of a political statement associated with a controversial group is not welcomed by many citizens of Bennington. And I urge the board to think carefully before allowing this. Its placement in front of our town hall implies a certain amount of government support for the message. And considering this group's antagonism toward law enforcement, it seems an insult to the good people of the Bennington Police Department to place it so near. The placement, or the permission has been granted for the mural on South Street. That does not compel execution. Once South Street has been designated an acceptable spot for the written expression of political speech, all political speech must be admissible, with the exception of profane speech or speech advocating violence. I urge the board to take very careful thought before you open that floodgate. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Appreciate your concerns. It doesn't sound like you have a question, it's more of a statement, or if that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the time to call in. I know you were in the waiting room for a long time, and I know you and I emailed about this separately, so I appreciate your, your concerns.
Thank you, Donald.
Okay, take care of it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. I'm going to enter the next caller into the meeting. And board, I see you have your hands up, but I'm going to power through to see if we can get some of these calls, some of these voices in. So caller ending in eight four zero, I've entered you into the meeting. This is the Bennington Select Board meeting. Before I unmute you, I would ask you to turn down the volume on your television or your computer, and I'll unmute you now, in case people are wondering this, I'm always trying to wind down the 10 to 15 second delay on Cat TV. So I'm, I've unmuted you, caller ending in eight four zero, and if you'd like to comment on the street mural, please give us your name and tell us where you live, and give us your thoughts.
Yes, I will. Good evening, it's Sam Berstein from Bennington, Vermont. Quick question, nobody has mentioned, maybe I haven't heard, because I've been in, in the queue, but what size lettering are you using? Five inch wording, six inch wording?
Cynthia, would you like to answer that?
Yes, at this moment, the size of the lettering is approximate. So I, I need to go do some more measuring before I can answer for the size.
I, I would, I would think so, before you make that proposal to B Trans, because obviously there are no parking spaces. I've looked at, at the, got the visual on it, from said crosswalk to the end of the curbing in front of town offices, and there are no parking spaces there, and, you know, I don't think it should be any larger than a car's width.
Right, so that's basically what I was going to say to you, is that the general consensus is that we're going to keep the painting area confined to what normally would be parking spaces, but is a no parking zone.
Right, and for those that are listening out there, remember, you made a proposal to B Trans, you still have to concur with B Trans to make sure they honor your proposal and give you an okay proposal.
Yes, we are, we are respecting B Trans, and we have those guidelines, and we will respect that as part of the. as part of the design process.
Right.
Oh, Sam, let me just cut in here. Sam, nuts and bolts. Stuart's on this. This is, you know, thank you for your concerns on that front, but let's, let's, if you have other concerns, let's, let's hear them.
Well, I have other concerns. I think all should be put in front of it. And if you're gonna be inclusive, I think it should be all. And I know I'm probably, probably be missing the point. My second statement is it's in the vicinity of the police department, and that's an intent. So, and as you know, things that have happened in the state of Vermont, I don't think there's not gonna be a turn of an eye on this. If you're gonna get a reaction on this, and there is a thing, you can forgive what you can't forget. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. I'm sorry to hustle you off. So one more caller I'd like to enter, board. We may need to continue this conversation. Are you okay if I leave your hands up in the air for now and we go to the next caller? Give me shakes of heads or, okay. Caller ending in nine, zero, one. I've entered you into the Bennington Select Board meeting. I'd ask you to take this minute to please turn down the volume on your television or your computer so that we don't have a feedback problem. And when I unmute you, which I'll do momentarily, I would welcome you to the Bennington Select Board and ask you to please give us your name, your full name, and tell us where you live and tell us what's on your mind. Caller ending...
Aaron Rodgers.
Okay. Yeah?
So I wanted to know why this...
Mr. Rodgers, where you...
I live in Bennington.
Okay, thank you.
And I am upset that this went so quickly through, and it really wasn't publicized that such a big political mural such as this wasn't made aware to the townspeople. I found this out through Facebook, and it's a big political issue. And Black Lives Matter has done a lot of terrorist-type stuff throughout the country. And, you know, look at everything that's happened in the past month. I mean, yeah, you guys are gonna put security cameras on it. Who's paying for that? There's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna come out of the hills and start vandalizing, because there's hundreds of people on Facebook that found out about this over the weekend and are very upset by it. Most of us in town want unity, and this really doesn't spread unity, putting this out there. You know, why don't we put Vermont Strong, United We Stand, you know, more of a, something that describes unity, who we are as Vermonters, that, you know, we care about everyone, instead of going to a political statement such as All Lives Matters, or Black Lives Matters, or merging it all? Because it's still making the emphasis on black inside of it. I mean, why aren't we putting Chinese in it too? Why aren't we putting other things in it? You know, what if someone wants that white next to black? You know, I don't think that this should be allowed on a taxpayer road, even if it's being painted for free using non-taxpayer money.
All right. Well, thank you for lodging your opinions and we hear what you're saying. I'm not sure there's a question in what you're saying, is there?
No, I just wanna make a comment. My question would be, why, why is this going to vote so quickly? This should have been advertised around town because it's such a heated topic. And we should have been able to voice our concerns previously and vote on it, and we haven't had that chance.
Okay. 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 Thank you. We, we received your comment. Appreciate you taking the effort to call in. I also know that you had to hang up in the waiting room for a while, which is kind of a drag, but thank you for your patience there.
Because there, you know, there's, there's not a lot of people that are for this, and we really aren't getting our chance to all have our opinions and voted, vote taken seriously on this.
Thank you. We're, I'm going to, I guess at this point, Aaron, I'm going to thank you for your call. I'm gonna move to some board comments here, if that's, if you have nothing else to say at this point.
All right. Well, thank you for...
Okay. Thanks. Yeah. Bye-bye. The board, there is no, there are no other comments in the waiting room at this point that I see, but I, but several hands have been up for a while, starting with Bruce, then Jim, then Sarah. But before we go into there, I would just ask you, I'd like to do a time check at 7:15. We have a long agenda ahead of us, including community policing, a BRC pathway project. They've been on hold for a while. Select Board vacancy, mask wearing concerns, that, that can be done. We could probably take that off. The tax rate has to be set. So what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to keep this conversation going, or do we want to continue it until our next meeting? Why don't we just start, keep going with board comment in the absence of any strong opinions? I guess we're gonna go, go to board comment next. I would ask you, please make your comments somewhat brief. Maybe one of the things that we should ask is, is the timing on this. Let's, let's ask, let's ask some questions on that, but I'm not gonna conserve myself here. Go ahead, Bruce. You go first.
I would just make a comment. I thought Audrey's point, Audrey Petruca's point was well-taken. And I'm, and I'm wondering what Mary might think of this. Does she think of this statement, All Black Lives Matter, with the way it's portrayed as political speech? And if she does, and, or, well, I would just ask that question just on that basis.
I do not believe that it is political speech. I believe that, I think that political is usually in our, in our culture, that means partisan, like either liberal or conservative, or democratic or republican or independent. This has nothing to do with that. This is about human dignities. It's about upholding the principles that we all claim are in all of our forming documents of our country, which do use the word "all," but the "all" hasn't been including a lot of people. So I don't think it's political at all. I think it's a supportive statement to people who have felt and been marginalized for years. And I, I don't, I don't feel that it's political. I happen to be a very religious person, and I could say it's a religious statement too, because certainly the faith that I belong to believes that it's appropriate. So I think we can always find, I mean, anything can be a political statement if someone wants to argue it that way. But I don't believe this is a political statement.
Thank you, Mary. I was, I appreciate your answer.
Rest you.
I'm sorry. May I make just one really quick statement? As an artist, I would classify it as artistic expression.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I would also like to add that we were asked by members of the black community to do this. They don't have the time or the strength, but we were specifically asked. I had that same question. Why should a bunch of non-black people do this? And the reason is because they need allies.
Thank you.
Thank you both for those answers. Jim Carroll, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, in response to Mary, of course, this is political, Mary. Of course it is. But I just wanna quote one of my favorite quotes. It's often attributed to Voltaire in response to Jason and Audrey in the last caller. "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." And for those disparate elements, for those people that, that feel like they haven't been included and, and their voices have not been heard, they should be afforded the same right to express themselves as this group has. That's all I have to say about it.
Jim, do you mean the same right on the street as in painting Make America Great Again? Or do you mean the same right as in joining the Select Board meeting and speaking their minds?
You got garbled there for a minute.
I'm sorry. I just was, I just was wondering if you, what you were getting at is that, this sort of interesting question of who gets to do art on the street and who gets to decide what art gets done on the street? I think that, that's maybe the, the most interesting part of this. It's the Select Board...
Well, if we're gonna...
But, but what's our, what's our rubric? What's our decision-making process look like on that? Is that what you're getting at, or are you getting it right?
If we're gonna be...
Speaking their minds.
I think that, you know, we have to apply the law equally, especially when it comes to the First Amendment. We as a governing body, you know, we're at risk of denying anyone their right of free speech if we don't apply the law equally. That's my point.
May I, I know I'm not on the Select Board, but may I respond to Jim? Or not?
Briefly. Go ahead, Mary. Briefly.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, Jim, that that does not mean that everybody can just go paint what they want on the street, because there was a process here. We presented a formal proposal to the Select Board. Stuart was kind enough to send it up north and get permission from the Department of Police or whatever that is, the B Trans. I don't know. So every, everyone would have to go through that. I will note that in the letter that the transportation people sent back, it did say that they were part of it. I'm not saying nobody else should do it or anybody can do it, but I think it's a case-by-case basis.
I missed that, Mary.
For something, our connection's not very good tonight. I'm not sure why we're getting a lot of garble, but I'm gonna move on and ask Sarah to go ahead and state what's on your mind, please, Sarah.
Sure. This is actually a question for Cynthia and Mary. This has been, I wanted to ask this earlier, but it looks like we're getting off to a slow start. So the All Black Lives Matter, I wondered, since you're representing quite a diverse population, you're representing a lot of people here. I wondered how many individuals, black individuals, actually supported that? Because to me, "all" is a sensitive message. Was there, was that anonymous, or how did that turn out?
That was because, as I, as, because at the very beginning, that's what Black Lives Matter decided embraced, the LGBTQA-plus community, and that's why they painted it in LA. Yes, we did run it by a lot of people. We ran it by, well, at our last rad meeting, we had 28 people there. We also ran it by many more people by email. And some people asked the same question that you just did, and we offered the same explanation, that particularly the LGBTQA community, Black Lives Matter wanted to include, and that's why the "all" is there. So, and everyone that we ran it by said, "Okay, I get it. That's fine," if that was your question.
Sure. I guess I'd interject here. How many people of color voted that down? Were there any?
Oh, yes. There were actually quite a few. There were at least 15 out of the number that I just gave you.
All right. Thank you.
Mary, she asked you how many voted it down, I think.
Oh, down? Oh, nobody. Nobody. I thought you, how many voted for it? I apologize. Nobody voted it down of color. In fact...
I'm sorry. I'm gonna interrupt you here. So the All Black Lives, the "all" was supported by everyone. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. That's it.
I have one more caller here. Mary, I'm gonna enter this last caller. I, I wonder if, if you could just tell us what the timing on this is? If we were to give this in the name of, in the name of not having people feel rushed, or to give us a week so that people could get their comments to us, would that set you behind awfully? Or if we were to take this up at our August 10th meeting, or would that be problematic?
I believe that that might be interpreted as a hesitation to approve it for people that haven't, that didn't watch this meeting. Who, there were a number of folks in town who were basically like not optimistic about it being approved. Everyone was very heartened when it sounded like you all were so enthused about it. The other thing is we can't possibly order the paint and do all that until we get an answer. And so I'm not sure how long that's gonna take, but we, so by delaying the decision a week, we might be setting back the actual mural by several weeks. And so it would be, I think, a lot more, I think it would be better if it's possible to decide it tonight.
Yes, I understand. Yep. And to be clear, it would be two weeks before our next meeting. I have another caller I'm going to enter into the, enter the, into the meeting here. This is crawler ending in 196. And caller ending in 196, I'd like to ask you to please turn the volume down on your computer and/or your other listening device that has Cat TV on it, so that when I unmute you, you don't have any interference. So caller ending in 196, I've entered you into the Bennington Select Board meeting. Please tell us your full name and your place of residence, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, Donald. It's Mike Rethel.
Hi, Matt.
I'm from Bennington.
Yeah?
And I think you need to let the community weigh in on this. You should table it. I don't think delaying it a couple of weeks or whatever is gonna hurt anything about the cause. Nobody that I know, that I've talked to myself included, do not believe that black lives do not matter, but all lives do matter. And this town is not owned by one group. It's owned by everybody. Everybody pays taxes, and the lady Audrey and then Mr., I think it was Lily and Roger, they really deserve to have their opinions presented too. And I would suggest that you wait even and have this in an open forum, and you will trigger a rash of whatever from the other side on this issue. They're right down there now, down the center of town protesting. So I think the wise thing to do for the Select Board is to put this on the table for another meeting, have more dialogue, let the press talk about it, let people write into you guys, into the Select Board, into the letters to the editor. And the only thing I would do, or I would recommend if I was on the board, is you turn me down to put something on the ballot last week without signatures. I would put this on the ballot in November without signatures from this Select Board as an advisory vote, so that everybody, everybody can weigh in on this. This is a bigger decision than just putting it on the seven of you. It really is. It's not fair to the seven of you. It's not fair to put you in this position. And you people have a right to think of yourselves and how you are gonna be felt in this community. So the wise thing I would think you guys would do would table it, see what the public reads, readers on it. And then November is coming up, and you can, this isn't, to me, this isn't a mural. This is a political sign, and you're gonna open up a can of worms to why we can't then put some other sign on some other street that represents some other cause. So that's my read on that. Now, are we gonna get the call in later about stuff from the citizens, or is this it?
That's their, well, hopefully. Yeah, probably about midnight.
Let me mention one quick thing. Nothing to do with this subject. One thing, I'll leave you guys alone. I've been going down, I've been going downtown. There's some great shops downtown. And I tried to talk to John Shanahan of the BBC a few weeks ago. He kind of blew me off, but that's the way John is. I wish you guys would, each one of you, go down to the shops downtown like I have. I've done a lot, not every one of them. Start from Holy Cow up that street, go all the way to, you know, Shas. There's some great shops up there, and I don't want them to be gone because of the virus or because of the economy or whatever. I think we need to spend some of this advertising money to put in the paper ads to let the local people know, the residents of Bennington and Shasbury and Powell, that these shops are here, they got great prices, they're great people. Some of them are paying $1,200 a month and more. And I've talked to a few of them, and they say, if it gets much worse, they're not gonna be able to survive. So the least we could do as a town with that money that you guys put aside, is spend a few grand... that you guys put aside, is spend a few grand and put some publicity out there in the paper for these shop owners and help them, uh, help them get more foot traffic downtown on weekends, shop local, blah, 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 blah. So thank you, I'll let you go. I know you got a busy agenda, but, uh, I hope you, the, the shop people really need some help out there.
Okay, thank you, Mike, thanks for your opinions.
Thank you.
Uh, I've got one more caller I'm gonna enter here. Uh. Caller, ending in three-four-seven, I've just entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. I'd ask you to please turn your volume down on your computer and/or your telephone or whatever you're listening to. And, uh, when we unmute you, which I will do in just a second, please give us your full name and tell us what town you're in and tell us what's on your mind. So caller, ending in three-four-seven, I've entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Please give us your name, tell us, tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, it's Jason Lilly again, and I have to agree with a comment that Mike Bethel made, that I think it puts you guys in a predicament to try to push this through or make a decision tonight. Um, I know Mary says she wants an answer tonight, and I have to disagree with her. I think this does need more dialogue, public input, so it's not putting you guys in a predicament to make a decision in the next five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna take this opportunity, I think, to, uh, wrap this topic up. And, um, I would look to the board for how you wanna proceed on this. It feels to me like one of the things that we need to acknowledge is that this is not necessarily a permanent installation. This is something that is artistic expression, as Cynthia put, and it is something that is timely and in a moment when people that are black and brown need to know that we support them. And I know that this is the kind of thing that might not be popular throughout the entire community, or it might. And I'm not sure what the, how the numbers on that work, but I do know that we are a representative government and that it's our, our decision, like it or not, to try to make these things work for people. So we, we may need to either make an unpopular or popular vote tonight, or we may wanna table this for a week and, um, take a vote on it then. I would be happy to say that I am, I am strongly inclined to approve this right now, because I feel like it's really important to state loudly and clearly that Black Lives Matter in Bennington, Vermont. And I would like to be unequivocal like that. It does not mean that white lives don't matter. White lives, white cisgender lives have, have mattered forever in our country, under our government. And that Black Lives Matter is just a little, uh, moment of catching up, quite frankly, when, when, um, social justice and equity needs to be caught up all around. So we're, we're not, I would say we are not, um, making a political statement here. We're making a social statement, which is that this community is open and welcome, uh, welcomes all people. And in fact, we really recognize that this important moment is a moment when we may need to reach out to the black and brown residents and say, we value you, we're glad you're here, and, um, we will support you in the ways that we can. So, but I also would be willing to say that that's how I feel now. I would expect to vote for this on August eleventh. I would be happy to take, uh, the interim to hear from people. I would particularly like to hear from our black and brown residents, uh, you know, by email or in any other way. And, um, if that felt like a better process to people, I would be open to that too. So I'm, I'm not going to direct the process here, but that, those are my feelings, and I would leave it up to the board to, um, give us a motion on how you'd like to proceed.
I make a motion that we table this for all the reasons that you, uh, that you mentioned, Donald. Uh, I think it is important that this is an important social statement in the context of the times that we live in. Um, but we need to have greater participation with all of the members of the Bennington community.
Jim, was that a, was that your feelings or was that a motion? I'm sorry, I missed the first couple of seconds of what you said.
Vote.
All right, so motions on the table to, a motion is.
Vote.
We're hoping to table this until our August eleventh meeting.
Uh, that would be August tenth, wouldn't it?
August tenth, August tenth, August tenth, I keep saying eleventh. Um. So nobody has seconded that motion yet. If, if somebody would like to second it, you may. If you'd like to keep this, uh, board discussion going, I, I would also, uh, entertain that.
I'd like to keep this open for discussion longer.
Okay. Uh, Jean, your hand looks like it's up, but it may not, it may be up from a long time ago. Go ahead, Jean Carter.
I agree with every single thing you said, Donald. I have written almost exactly what you said, word for word. Um, if I really believed that dragging this out another couple of weeks was gonna make a difference, I probably would be more inclined to want to table it. I don't think that's gonna be the case. And I think I spent a good chunk of the day today watching the, um, memorial service for John Lewis and hearing him speak. It's what that man has done for this country, his work is not done. And in my personal world, I will do my part to continue fighting for what he fought for.
Jeanne Jenkins, your hand's up.
Hi, I also, um, I, I think that people can make this a political statement, but it's not. Um, and it's a statement that's long overdue. And I think, I wish we were hearing from a much broader, um, uh, range of voices in the community. But I, but that is because I think robust conversation is useful. Um, but I think we should vote tonight.
Other opinions, Sarah?
I believe we should, uh, maybe, I'm sorry, I believe we should vote tonight. I think that, um, voices we hear next time are going to be, they're not gonna be minority voices. I believe that's the voices that we want here. Even if they are, they're not going to be, it's not going to, it's going to be one-sided, in my opinion. That's not very well said, but, um, you might get the gist of what I'm saying.
I'm not entirely sure I understand your, your comments, uh.
Yeah, so I think next time when we hear opinions or comments, the percentage is going to be skewed.
Uh, Bruce, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, um, Donald, thank you for calling on me. I was ready to make a motion before, and that's primarily because I actually do think this is the board. The board needs to make this decision. This is what we're elected for. Um, I, I asked Mary the question about whether this is a political statement, basically to hear what I trust Mary was going to say. And I, whether, whether it's political or not, I know it's of a different sort than some of the other statements that are suggested. And, um, reasonable minds can disagree on whether it's political. But it, but it is a statement, it seems to me, that's critical for now, uh, for this time, and it's critical for this town. And it is one that I support. Um, I'm not an artist, I can't do things like that. Um, I failed art. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to, um, since, since the motion to table is, I think, has failed, um, I'm happy to make a motion to support the proposal in whatever way the Select Board can before, uh, the Agency of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, well, we now have a motion and a second. Um, is there, so your motion, Bruce, would you repeat your motion, please?
It is to support the proposal made, uh, before us tonight, uh, before the, in any way that the town can. Uh, I'm assuming it has to go back to the Agency of Transportation and, or the, uh, the letter seems to imply that the, uh, final determination in eligibility in such matters resides with Federal Highway Administration. I don't know how that gets done. But Stu, if you could help me out on just that little part? Or is it just us?
It's just you.
Okay, then I, but I, my motion is to support the proposal.
And I second that proposal.
Great. Uh, other board discussion, we, we did, we did skirt around, uh, I thought, a, a conversation that we could have for hours about what wouldn't, wouldn't be permitted. Uh, it feels to me like if this was, if this was political in nature, if it, if it directed one towards one party or another, I would, I would reject it. If this was religious nature, Mary, to your point, I think I would reject it as a municipal thing. If this was selling something or promoting some personal benefit, I would reject it. Uh, if this was hate speech in, in any form, I would reject it. Uh, this to me feels like, uh, artistic expression of compassionate concerns that are not going to be there forever. Probably just, you know, next spring, this would have to be all voted on again. If this, if it did go down, it would have to, and it wanted to happen a second time. Could be a different Select Board, we might all get, you know, get voted out of office, or who knows what would happen at the town meeting. But, um, it feels to me that that's the best I can do at this point to give a little bit of a sense of how I would think about this if we were hit with another proposal for a street art. So any other comments? There is a motion on the floor. We, we cannot leave, uh, go on to our next thing without taking the vote on this at this point. Um. Any other comments? Jean, Jean, Jim, you've spoken your piece. All right, well, then I guess I'm gonna call the motion, and I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves. And I will say, all in favor of, uh, the proposal as, as put forward by Bruce, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, sorry, Jim, are you opposing?
No, I said aye.
Oh, you said aye, okay. Uh, so did I, I may have messed that up, but did everybody say aye? Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We need to have more community dialogue about this. We, we need to express why this is important so that we continue to, um, make this a, a moment of celebration, and, which I think it should be, and a moment of, uh, artistic enjoyment, which are so few in this COVID era. And, um, I thank you all for a difficult discussion. And, um, we're gonna move on to the next item. Uh, Mary and Cynthia.
Yes, well.
For hanging in there with us, and thank you for your part in this.
Thank you very much for the thoughtful discussion and consideration. And I will leave the meeting and, uh, loosen in on another venue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for, for taking this up with us.
Have a good evening, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, board. We are going to move on to, uh, community policing.
Yes.
And, uh, so it's now quarter of eight. Um, as we do that, I, I would like to, I, I don't know if you would mind, but, uh, I, I have two people waiting in the waiting room who have been waiting for over an hour to give a presentation. So I would like to propose that we table items six and seven, and Stuart can, do we need to do eight tonight? Do we need to do the tax rate tonight? Yes. We do need to do that, okay. So we're not gonna get around that?
The tax rate, yes, please.
We're not gonna get around the tax rate, uh, but maybe we could really shorten managers' report, uh, upcoming agenda, other business, and get to public comment as soon as we can here. Does that sound all right to people? Okay.
That would be fine.
But we're gonna table six, we're gonna table seven. Uh, and I, I'd like to, I'd like to go to, uh, the, uh, BRCRC meeting at this point, if possible, Jeanne, um, so that we can get the two members in that, that have been waiting for so long. So we are, uh, I have entered into the meeting, Mark Anders and Kat, are you in there too? Did I, I'm not quite sure who. This, I thought this was Kat, but it looks like it's somebody else. Oh, it is Kat, okay. Who's Mark? Oh, Mark Gregory Anders, I see. All right, so he's, he's coming online here. Kat, you're muted, and Mark is not online yet. Uh, Kat, I know you have a, um, something you wanna be able to put on the screen, and so I am going to make you a co-host if I can figure out which one you are here.
Okay.
Okay, so you should be a co-host at this point and have the ability to share your screen when you're ready.
All right.
Oh, uh, Mark, are you with us, Mark Anders?
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay, you're a gray screen, down at the bottom. Uh, so Kat, thank you, oop, where'd you go?
Oh, I'm just turning off my video while I switch into, uh, presentation mode.
Okay, so there's Mark. There's Kat and her presentation, or there's her presentation anyway.
Everybody can see this?
We can see that, it's great.
Wonderful.
Um, li- listen, before we start, I'm sorry you had to wait so long. I don't know, listening to an hour of muzak must have been just about your undoing, and I apologize for that. Uh, but thank you for your patience, and we're glad to have you here tonight.
No, really, I appreciate all the work that you guys do, all the grace that, with which you handle these, um, heavy topics. And, um, honestly, I, I recognize the very important but undeniably heavy topics that you guys have been discussing so far this evening. Um, fortunately, this, uh, presentation is, is relatively light and, uh, optimistic, future-oriented. Um, I am though, uh, I know how strapped you are for time, and so I'm gonna go through this quicker than I had initially intended. Um, but I will make the presentation available to everyone afterwards. And so if you have follow-up questions, don't hesitate, but I will, I will try to go through it quite, uh, a fast clip. Um, so I'm Kat Briers, for those who don't know me, uh, Senior Planner with the Bennington County Regional Commission. Uh, BRCRC, we're also known, uh, for those who are unfamiliar, we, uh, are a regional organization that provides technical assistance to member municipalities. The county of Bennington is one of our member municipalities. We provide, uh, technical planning assistance in the areas of municipal planning, transportation planning, uh, economic development, et cetera. The presentation tonight is under the auspices of our transportation program. And so I'm gonna be talking about the trolley line path scoping study that, uh, BRCRC staff are currently undertaking. And, uh, briskly, the, uh, the point of this study, it's a feasibility study looking at the possibility of converting, uh, historic trolley line into a shared-use path, also commonly known as a bike path, that would connect, uh, Bennington and Williamstown, Vermont, through Pownell, um, as an alternative, uh, for pedestrians and cyclists to not have to use Route Seven. So I'm gonna give some generalities about the project and also run through what, and the impacts of a, of a possible pathway like this could be in the area. Um, to date, the, most of the work that we've done has been fieldwork, so I'm gonna give you a little tour of what we've seen as we've gone out to assess whether or not the historic trolley line, uh, would be a good fit to be reused to this purpose. Um, you can see up on the left throughout the presentation, I have one of the historic maps of the trolley line, which, if you can tell, uh, parallels or, or runs over what today is Route Seven. Um, and we'll talk about the remaining steps to complete the study, which will be done by the end of this year. Um, just quickly though, on this overview slide, uh, here's our study area. Uh, as I mentioned, the historic trolley line ran, uh, service from Bennington through Pownell to Williamstown. And so those are the three communities that comprise our study area. If this path were to be completed, it would comprise roughly twelve miles of shared-use path, and it would connect four village centers, historic village centers, Bennington, Pownell Center, Pownell to the south, and into Williamstown. The two staff contacts at BRCRC are myself and Mark Anders, our Regional Transportation Planner, and he gets credit for, uh, for coming up with this idea to look into this possibility. He's on the call and will be available to answer questions. We also have a steering committee with. We also have a steering committee with residents from all the towns involved. We are still looking for participants, so if someone out there is interested and has the free time to do some homework for us and with us, please be in contact to share your interest. As I said previously, we're about halfway done. We did kick this off at the end of 2018. For several reasons, there's been some setbacks, not least of which is the current pandemic, but we are gonna be accelerating and completing final presentations and the publication of the final report by the end of the year. So, to the meat of the matter, what is a scoping study? For our purposes, a scoping study is a feasibility, in this case funded by the Vermont Agency of Transportation. And the agency funds these studies to investigate the feasibility of proposed solutions to establish transportation problems. The problem in this case is that Route 7, as it goes from Bennington down through Pownell to Williamstown, is not complete streets compliant. What's complete streets? It is a statewide policy that roadways be safe not only for motor vehicles, but also for pedestrians and cyclists. And when you glance at some of these images from Route 7, it should be clear to glance the barriers to having this be a safe roadway for pedestrians and cyclists. We have very narrow shoulders in much of the area, also these kind of cliff-like conditions that are common along the roadside, even further south where the shoulder opens up and is wider. The velocity of traffic, which is typically between 50 and 60 miles an hour, and which very frequently has these very large semi trucks, make it clear that even if we tried to integrate some kind of bike path sidewalk option along the Route 7 corridor, it would still be very difficult to guarantee that it would be safe for pedestrians and cyclists, which leads our regional transportation planner, these are the types of problems that keep a regional transportation planner awake at night, led him to consider if an alternate route in parallel with Route 7 could be the solution to providing more safety for cyclists and pedestrians in this area. Something to get out of the way is what I'm sure is a question very quickly in a lot of people's minds, is a shared-use or a bike pathway really a viable transportation solution? Again, this is a transportation study at heart. And a number of years ago, I would have said, yep, you're probably right, and we would move on, but there have been recent developments that actually make this type of a proposal much more viable for a rural area like ours, specifically the growing popularity of electronic bicycles, also known as e-bikes, which provide an electric assist to the rider that allows you to go faster, farther, and over much hillier terrain than you would normally, and it's actually made, you know, daily or otherwise regular for communities in an area like ours, much more of a possibility. I myself have been an e-bike commuter in town. Mark Anders, our transportation planner, is currently and regularly commutes from Bennington down to North Adams. And on his e-bike, it takes him about an hour. So, when you reduce that distance to just being Bennington to Williamstown, maybe we're talking about a time of 40, 45 minutes. When you reduce it further to being, say, Bennington to Pownell Center, you could be talking about a commute of just 20 to 30 minutes, which starts to sound much more comparable to other types of commutes that people are undertaking. And so, how did the trolley line come onto our radar as a possibility for solving this transportation problem? Again, Mark gets the credit. He was around in 2016 when local historian Joe Hall gave a presentation for the Bennington Historical Society about the history of Bennington trolleys. In short, and very, very brief, the relevant history is that the trolley line service, which was operated by the Berkshire Street Railway, operated for about 22 years until 1929, when it ended because the advent of motor vehicles really made the trolley service obsolete after that point. There's a much more comprehensive history that Joe Hall did as part of this presentation. It's available online. We highly recommend, if you want more details, to check that out. It's about an hour, and we can't do it justice here, but it has great nuggets like these types of images where you can see the same cut of what the trolley line looked like in the past and what it looks like today. And here's just a couple of shots, because we can't be here and not show you some of this cool stuff. Here's the trolley car on Main Street, and you can see the lights illuminate the lines really well. During the day, you can't see the lines as well, but you can see the trolley itself and the competition, the transportation competition on all sides. This is the Ritchie Block Building where the Bennington Bookshop and other stores are located today. So, again, I'm going through this a little bit faster than I had originally intended, but I hope that's helpful to you guys. Beyond just being a transportation solution, this proposal to develop a pathway really becomes compelling when you consider all of the additional benefits that it could bring to the region. Economic development, it could pass through four historic village centers, two of which in Pownell have actually suffered from the fact that Route 7 has diverted traffic that used to pass through those historic villages, now passes around them. But it would certainly bring economic development potential to the whole region as it serves as an attraction not only for tourists, but also for residents to both live here, stay here, because of the recreation and public health benefits that it gives to people and families in particular. And there's inherent benefits in the historic preservation of the trolley line in this region. Here's some examples of where similar paths have been developed, and the types of businesses that can develop along these areas when you have increased foot and bike traffic. What gets really exciting is when you look at this project area, which you can see here, it's from Bennington through Pownell to Williamstown. When you look at both existing and planned shared-use paths, just like the ones that we're discussing here, are planned to be completed, and if these were all completed, they would actually form a 45-mile continuous shared-use path in the region. And experts that study this type of thing consider 45 continuous miles to be past the threshold where an asset like this is not just a local asset, but really becomes a regional or even a national asset that people are willing to travel a distance to enjoy. It's notable that $2.5 billion in outdoor recreation money comes to Vermont every year through tourism. I think we can do even more to attract more of those dollars to our area and grow the pie and just bring more folks here, not only the tourists, but as I said, long-term residents and businesses as well. Of course, it's not all a rosy picture. What our responsibility is in looking and doing the scoping study is to consider it on all sides, and so there's concerns that are inherent as part of any type of a major infrastructure project such as this one. There's environmental and cost, both short-term and long-term costs to scope out. Often, there's nuisance concerns that crime, littering, loitering will increase. Good news is that for the Ashwell-Tuckahoe Trail Trail, there was a property of butter survey that was undertaken in 2014 that demonstrated that anticipated nuisances and crime reports did not materialize, and overwhelmingly, property owners that have bought the rail trail reported very positive overall impact from the trail. There's also importantly, a major, major barrier to this project ever being completed is the right-of-way impacts. The ownership of the trolley line was gifted to neighboring property owners, and we think roughly in 1940. And so that means that the vast majority of it is currently in private property ownership. Here's a quick little walk in the fieldwork that we did so far, starting up in Bennington. This is off Main Street between Morgan Street and Beach Street, and this is a bridge that the trolley crossed to go across the Walloons Act and down into what is today the Greenberg Headwaters Park. If you walk around there, you can see it, and that's what this bridge is. It's part of the old trolley line. Moving down into the Greenberg Headwaters and One World Conservation Center, that's an interesting area because the trolley line is very well-preserved and is actually open for public access. So, that's exciting. It's a great model that starts to lend one to think that this could be developed relatively quickly in those areas. It wouldn't be a dramatic change from its current use. But as you move south, you do see predominantly private ownership of what is the trolley line. So, an example is looking off to the east from Route 7. You can see the Bennington Sherick Station and the solar panels associated with it. You see the trolley line here. Again, it looks beautiful, could be really well-suited from an infrastructure standpoint to be reused as a path. Of course, there's the private ownership barrier to be overcome. This continues down south. You can see off of Route 7 here, the path is kept open. Obviously, folks are using it already. We're not the first people to think about maybe putting bikes on it. You have other areas where the trolley line infrastructure was adapted as existing public roads. So, take Pine as an example of that. As you go down, you see these cattle passes in the infrastructure where cattle were able to pass below the trolley line. One marker that I think most people in the area will recognize, this is a powerhouse that provided electricity to the electric trolley in Pownell Center. You have some more of this infrastructure, cattle passes. West of Route 7 and Pownell, you can see Route 7 is passing up here. You can see the trolley bed itself kind of vaults into the air, and it's really stunning, to tell the truth. And as it goes up very gradually on a gradual slope, it provides amazing views out to the west over the Huzick River Valley. Yeah, and it comes down into Pownell Center. You can see Church Street where the trolley ran here and down. And into Williamstown, the trolley line right-of-way is what today is the railroad right-of-way. This can be very difficult to develop, but the advantage that we would have in this situation if we were to pursue a path development here is that one of the, there used to be two rail beds, and only one of them is active. So, you can see in both of these images the fact that there's a dormant railway bed that might be convertible to a shared-use path. So, what is our overall sense of the viability at this point? Our overall sense is that, yeah, this is a real possibility. The entire trolley line is not gonna be suitable to be repurposed, but there are definitely areas that it seems like a real possibility. But we're not done. We have to very systematically conclude our work by analyzing impacts to all kinds of resources. As I've said, right-of-way impacts is huge, costs, how to cross waterways and roadways, and ultimately, which alignment, which route will be the best. So, we're going to, as I said, accelerate our work, do the assessment I was just describing, assess the various alternatives for routing, and we'll be sharing those findings through a couple of presentations and of course, the issuance of the final report by the end of the year. And that's it.
So, Kat, you would be coming back to us in, you went by that, but in November, is that right? Or is it September with the?
There's actually a couple of, we do an alternatives presentation and a final public presentation. And these are our current projected timelines, but we have to work closely with our steering committee. We haven't gotten input from our steering committee, but we do wanna have this wrapped up by the end of the year.
Well, it's certainly a great vision, and it would be lovely to tie the communities together. In junior high school, I had a girlfriend in Williamstown, and I remember riding my bicycle to Williamstown, very motivated to go see her, and, you know, the ride back was a killer. I think that long ride up from Williamstown back to Bennington, that could be really interesting for commuting, but maybe e-bikes change that a little bit. Either way, though, I think as far as economic development goes and as far as making our community a desirable place for people to move and live and exist and connect our community to hopefully create more jobs, it seems like a great project to me. I don't know what, if anything, this board would have against this. It seems like a very positive project, but I would open it to the board if you have any questions at this point. I'm sorry, I see your hands, Sarah. Go ahead, and I see Jeanie and then Jean.
All right, yeah, I wondered at what point we would learn of the costs and if the alternatives were a better cost, if that's now or if that's at a different point.
Let's see. Trying to navigate back to... So, the answer to that question is, we are still developing those points, and the alternatives presentation is gonna focus on the alternatives that you pointed out, and the final presentation would be once we have information, say, on the costs. That's why there's so many presentations that are part of the scoping study process, is there's really so much information. And we, for example, to give you good cost estimates, we kind of have to have identified the alternatives, the preferred alternatives first, so that's how it's spaced out.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeanie.
Hi, so that was a great presentation. This really would be wonderful to have this. Are you doing presentations in Pownell as well? And then is there a, and then how do you work with the Massachusetts equivalence?
Yes, we, so these are the local concerns meetings for the scoping study. Everything is very structured, how you proceed through the process. So, this is our Bennington local concerns meeting, but we just did a Pownell meeting. Last Thursday was their select board meeting. We haven't yet determined the Williamstown one, but there will be one in Williamstown. And I mentioned our steering committee that has members from all three towns, and so we're currently working with a select board member from the Williamstown Select Board and their town planner.
All right, Jean.
All I wanted to say was, if there's anyone who's listening who's interested, I would really encourage you to go down to the Ashwell-Tuckahoe Trail in Williamstown. I mean, I guess it's Lanesboro, and that's where I've gotten on to it. You can really get a feel for what it could be like. It's right at the intersection of the road that goes through the Berkshire Mall, and you'd be getting onto Route 8. So, it's absolutely beautiful. It's about 20 miles, is that right, Kat?
12.7 at this point.
Oh, guess what, I did it, I did both ways, so it was 24, yeah.
Well, I would say from personal experience that there's just about nothing harder than a multi-segmented trail project that crosses through dozens, if not hundreds, of private properties. And so, this is certainly a big, it's a big aspiration. I'm really glad you're looking into it, and I don't see any call-in, so I think you can assume there's no public comment on this particular section. So, I think as far as the local concerns meeting, you know, we, I don't hear any concerns from this board. Clearly, you're not asking us for anything yet, but we do look forward to hearing the results of this study when it comes to us in October.
Wonderful, and if anybody who's listening or listens to the recording later wants information, you can go to the BCRC website. This presentation will be available, as well as Mark and my contact information.
That's great. Thank you very much, Kat, thank you, Mark. Keep up the good work, it's the kind of stuff that makes our community strong.
Good, thank you, guys, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So, Jeanie, we're going to flip to community policing at this point. This was item four on the agenda, and I'm gonna ask you to give us an update on where you are with that. I know we have an upcoming visit from Curtis Reed. You have some other updates for us, so go ahead and watch it.
We do.
Yes, we have actually several updates. So, first, just to, I guess, make sure everyone knows that Curtis Reed from Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity did lead a training on July 14th and 15th, two half-days for the select board, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, Community Development Director, Chief of Police and Lieutenant. And there is a summary of the training and the resources that are up under the Community Resources, Community Policing section of the town website. So, please do check that area, because Shannon has been fantastic about putting information up as we have it. One of the things that we did as part of that training was we identified common values and created an aspirational statement that is as follows. Bennington is an engaged, diverse, and resilient community. "Bennington is an engaged, diverse, and resilient community. We all contribute to our shared vitality and benefit from an outstanding quality of life." Right? And we'll come back to that statement in a couple minutes. Second thing we wanted to update you on is the research team update, and I'm going to turn that over to Jean.
Sure. So I was given the task to be one of the team of people who interviewed the applicants for the two research teams, which I fulfilled that duty with Curtis and Michelle Johnson. And the kind of the statistics of that process are this. We received 15 letters of interest for the six positions. All were contacted, and 12 of them met the posting requirements and were available during the research timeframe, so we interviewed all 12 of them. It was a very diverse pool of candidates, which was wonderful. Curtis's questions that he wrote were difficult. They were not typical questions, and they took a lot of thought for each candidate to answer. The teams were selected immediately following the interview process. It took two days. And there has already been an orientation meeting where they've met each other. And although they're working independently, they did get to meet each other and spend time with each other that afternoon. From what I'm hearing from Curtis, they jumped right in and started off on their task, which is to independently research two topics, which are community oversight and community policing. So they're working independently with some guidance from Curtis to develop a bibliography that speaks to whichever, which team they're on. That bibliography is going to be available to anyone in the community that wants to educate themselves and learn more about those two, you know, kind of arching topics that are part of this initiative. So be looking for that in the next few weeks. Curtis wants to look at the research, the bibliography, before it goes live, but it's not going to take long. They really only have a few weeks to do this. It's a quick and dirty process. And then at the end, once Curtis has vetted all of their bibliography topics, then there'll be an open meeting for the community where they'll be presenting their bibliography and speaking to the community members who are interested. Who, I'm not sure if that's going to be in person yet. I don't think that's been determined. Let's see. The teams are as follows. There's two teams. One is going to be researching community oversight, and the three team members are Alana Hart, Joe Holt, and Katie Berger. The other team is going to be researching community policing, and that's Jason Lee, Cara Lusa, and Robert Ebert. And I personally want to thank all of the candidates who applied for the positions. It was just, it was a great pool of people that we had to choose from. And those that didn't get selected, I really hope that you'll stay involved and stay engaged. Clearly, you're interested and we don't want to lose you. So I guess that's all I have to say. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
And that leads right into the third item. So the next community policing meeting will be an in-person meeting. It can also be seen on CAT TV, so if you don't want to be in person, you can watch it on CAT TV. It will be Wednesday, August 5th, at 6:00 PM, on the first floor of the firehouse. And so this meeting is not a select board meeting. It's a meeting facilitated by the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity. And the purpose of the meeting is to continue the community dialogue around what we as a community see as our vision and what we see as the mission of the Bennington Police Department and how those two things fit together. Because it's an in-person meeting and we are in, we are still in COVID times, face masks will be required, social distancing will be required. There is a maximum, Paul Dansrow has done the math. Maximum number of people who can be in the fire facility will be 50. There is an RSVP process, and we will start putting the flyers and information out tomorrow. I know there will also be press releases. It'll be on the town website. And again, if you don't want to be in person, you can follow it on CAT TV. There will, we hope that people will look at all the community policing materials that are up on the town website prior to the meeting so that you can come to the meeting and really be ready to delve into discussion. And then, one other thing I think we just want to let you know about, and we'll go to protocols, is that, Jean, Bruce and I have been reaching out to the Vermont delegation to learn as much as we can about the thinking on civilian review boards. So we are trying to get a better sense of whether the legislature is looking at local, county, regional review boards, because this is a topic that will be taken up in August when they reconvene. So as we learn more on that, we will update you. And then, we are in the process of looking at what we have tonight, actually, in the packet, and it didn't come out until today, so people might not have gotten it. It's on the website, is a Citizen Advisory Committee Protocol. And this is based on the protocol that we have before us tonight, which we're not making a decision on tonight, is based on practices in other communities and also our town attorney's advice. And so we wanted to look at that protocol today. Want to say, this is... The select board right now is serving as the interim review board. We do not intend to be doing this long-term. So this is a protocol that we're establishing that will provide a step-by-step process for any other reviews that need to be done while we are serving as that interim, as well as, I think it should be a good foundation for, you know, any protocol that follows. So because people might not have been able to see it and because it has a bunch of wheres and therefor's in it, Bruce, I'm going to turn to you to do the honors of reading the Citizen Advisory Committee Protocol.
Okay, just so, get a heads up to everybody, this is not easy to pick up, and I hope that you go to the town's website and pick it up, but here it is. Town of Bennington Citizen Advisory Committee Protocol. Whereas, the Town of Bennington Police Department has adopted a procedure for internal investigations by General Order Number 19-01, dated February 25, 2020, the Investigations Policy. And whereas, 20 Vermont Statutes Annotated, Section 2401, requires that reviews of certain types of alleged unprofessional conduct by police officers be investigated. And whereas, 20 BSA Section 2401, Subsection 4, Subsection E, requires that such investigations be subject to civilian review. And whereas, the Investigations Policy, Section 2, C, Subsection 3, currently provides that the Town Manager or members of the Select Board perform this function. And whereas, the Select Board wishes to adopt a set of protocols for civilian review of allegations of unprofessional conduct that will assure public scrutiny of police conduct and internal discipline. And whereas, the Select Board recognizes that investigations of specific allegations of illegal conduct by particular officers shall be treated as confidential under applicable Vermont law prior to resolution. Now therefore, the Town of Bennington Select Board, with the concurrence of the Town Manager, hereby adopts the following protocol for review of allegations of unprofessional police conduct subject to civilian review under 20 BSA Section 2401, Section 4, Subsection E, including but not limited to compliance alleging unprofessional conduct that are determined to be unfounded by the Chief of Police, otherwise known as the Chief. One, when a complaint is received by the Bennington Police Department against an officer or officers other than the Chief, and when the complaint alleges conduct that reasonably could be considered unprofessional as defined by 20 BSA Section 2401, Subsection 5, the Chief shall investigate the complaint, develop a full and complete record, and present the report and findings for civilian review to the designated civilian advisory committee, currently the Select Board. Two, the advisory committee and Town Manager shall meet to review the report and its findings. The Chief of Police shall present the report, answer questions, and provide documentation on procedures and protocols of the department used in the Chief's investigation. The Chief's findings shall be explained and justification provided. The advisory committee may request additional information or explanation. Three, the advisory committee may decide to accept the report or to accept the report with comments. Alternately, the advisory committee may disagree with the findings of the Chief. In the event of disagreement, the advisory committee shall provide its reasons in writing to the Chief and the Manager, as well as its recommended actions to either sanction the officer or officers or to provide other corrective actions to prevent a future occurrence. Such corrective actions may include additional training for the officer or officers, a change in protocol or procedure to prevent the actions, and/or a combination of the aforementioned actions. In this case, municipal council shall also be notified. Four, if the report recommends sanctions against an officer for unprofessional conduct that involves, or if the Chief and the Manager agree after reviewing the response from the advisory committee, that sanctions should be imposed, the officer shall be notified by the Chief, and the protocols provided by the Police Union Working Agreement shall then control. Five, except as otherwise required by law, A, investigatory reports about complaints that allege illegal conduct by particular officers shall be treated as confidential, and review of such reports shall be in executive session prior to final action by the advisory committee. B, investigatory reports about complaints that allege unprofessional conduct but not illegal conduct by particular officers shall be treated as public documents, and review of such reports shall be in open session. Six, the determination of the advisory committee shall be made by vote in open session. In matters in which the advisory committee does not support a referral or further disciplinary and/or criminal proceedings or proceeding arising out of potentially illegal conduct by a particular officer, the investigatory report and findings, together with any comments by the advisory committee, shall thereafter be made public, subject to any specific redactions required under 1 BSA Section 317, Subsection C. Seven, in any matter in which the advisory committee supports a referral for further disciplinary and/or criminal proceedings arising out of alleged illegal conduct as recommended by the Chief and/or the Town Manager, the advisory committee's public vote shall not identify the officer by name, and the investigatory report shall be released, if at all, subject to any specific redactions required under 1 BSA Section 317(c). Eight, we're almost there. In any matter in which the advisory committee decides that the evidence may support a finding of illegal conduct by a particular officer, but in which further disciplinary and/or criminal proceedings are not recommended by the Chief and/or the Town Manager, the advisory committee may vote to forward the report to the state's attorney or Attorney General for further review. In such case, the advisory committee's public vote shall not identify the officer by name, and the investigatory report shall be released, if at all, subject to any specific redactions required under 1 BSA Section 317(c). Nine, upon the conclusion of any disciplinary and/or criminal proceeding involving alleged illegal conduct by a particular police officer, all related records shall be made public, to the extent authorized by law.
Thank you, Bruce. I bet you need to get a drink of water.
I do. Thank you.
That was really long. I do want to just let, I guess, the board know that we have reached out to the IACP. We have something like 40, 45 hours of consultation services with them to see if they can share with us any model protocols or give us, you know, further information as we develop this. Donald, I want to turn this over to you at this time for discussion.
So just to amplify that last thing you said about IACP, you know, certainly one of the light criticisms, or not at all light criticisms that we heard from some people was a question of what information gets released and when it gets released. I think we're looking to IACP for more guidance on that. So I would like to take a vote on this tonight, if possible, because it feels to me that we should have something in place so that when the next, if the next, if a police complaint comes at us, we have at least an interim policy in place. This is, by its very nature, ephemeral. It's something that's going to change over time. It'll change during the course of the summer. And the Select Board probably won't be doing this job for very long, but nevertheless, we should have a very clear written policy on what we do with police complaints. So it would be my preference that we work towards passing this tonight, or we could do it in two, we could do it at our next meeting. If we don't do it tonight, I think it probably stands that this is our interim practice, unpassed interim practice, that... And perhaps that's a better way to go. I see you giving a thumbs up, Bruce, because that does give us time to give, get the IACP work involved in this and kind of do a little more refining. So maybe I'm changing my mind even as we go here. But I am going to say that, as, this was essentially the skeleton of what we used to analyze the previous police complaint. I think we would use this again in the interim, short of anything else. So maybe it becomes our kind of de facto draft policy, and we can tighten it up a little bit more and talk about it at our August 10th meeting and hopefully nail it down somewhat firmly at that point. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay. So Jeannie has her hand up. I bet Sarah's hand beat you by a nose, so I'm going to get Sarah in there first, and then we'll go to Jeannie.
Yeah, so I... Okay, so I still have major concerns that showing people's image after they have the plaintiff's image and not redacting their names will cause retaliatory action against them. I just wanted to voice this again. So this is in 5B and also again in Section 6. And I feel like those might be something we want to relook at and revisit before we vote on this. Yeah, any thoughts? Or I just wanted to voice that again.
Yep, and as I mentioned, I share that concern. Also, reached out to IACP through Dan Monks and Jeannie. We're looking for some best practices on that. And I've also reached out to Curtis Reed for some recommendations and within the state for ways that we could triangulate that information. So that concern, I think, is shared and is being considered, Sarah, but thank you for bringing it up. Jeannie, you have your hand up.
Well, I think, to sort of piggyback on what Sarah just said, yeah, I think we all, I think we all have concerns and we followed the... We followed the practices that were shared with us. And I look forward, I'm thinking the IACP will be able to give us a much broader net than what we were able to address. So, you know, I don't think we should vote tonight. I do think this should be a two-meeting conversation. You know, I think we didn't get this until late. Public has... Public hasn't been able to read it until today. And I think there's some more fact gathering that we can do. So I'm happy to, to wait until the next meeting to vote on this.
That's fine, and it is a work in progress. And it is a skeleton that we would use if something came up in the interim. So that, that's all fine. It is, it is worth noting that during our last process, I think as we stated, we did rely heavily on the, on our legal counsel, Rob Wilmington and his staff, and on the Vermont State Police Advisory Committee, is that right? SPAC. And Julie Skripner, Julie Spurling, Julie Skripner. Very helpful in helping us design that. We still may not have it right. It's a work in progress. We hope not to have to use it very often, but let's, let's keep trying to get, improve it. Okay, anything else, Jeannie, from your work group? Do, everyone else is happy? Jim, Jim Carroll, you still with us? You're happy to wait until the next meeting to, to vote on this? Jim's happy. Okay. All right, so we are going to move on to our next agenda item. We're going to skip item six, which is select board vacancy, because really it's not very urgent at this point. Sad, but not urgent. We're going to skip, we're going to table item seven, mask-wearing concerns. A lot of this has been, has changed since we set the agenda by the fact that the governor has put a mask mandate in place. And so I think some of that is just seeing how that plays out and whether or not the community is willing to abide by his, I think, good restriction on mask-wearing, which will, will help us all and, and make us all safer. So Stuart, that's going to bring us to item eight, which is the FYI 2020 analysis to set the 2020 tax rate. A little bit of good news, glad to see that. I do like seeing those little tax rates come in lower than projected. But give us the details, would you please?
That's correct, Donald. Back when we built the budget back in January, we did project that if all of the agencies were approved, that the tax rate would go up about five cents. The agencies were all approved. But I'm happy to report that the total increase this year will be 4.19 cents, or about a 3.47% increase. It's a little higher on a percentage point of view than even I would prefer, but it breaks down this way. The general fund rate is up 4.31 cents for a total of 75.4 cents. The highway fund actually is down by 0.12 cents for a total of 4.02 cents. And the fire fund is leveled at 8.42 cents, which gives us a total tax rate for the coming year of $1.3374, total tax rate. As I said, it's up 3.4% over the prior year. But I think it's well within what we had hoped to accomplish. And if you, if you look at the actual calculations, you don't have, don't have last year's with you, but the grand list actually dropped a little bit this year. Some of it due to COVID concerns, some of it due to some of the changes in ownership in shopping plazas and some of our major property changes. So even in spite of that, we were able to come in lower than what we anticipated. And I would recommend approval of those rates.
Well, it, it would have been fun to calculate what, how, how much it would have cost if it had been a five-cent increase instead of a four, just over a four-cent increase. But let's not do that right now. It would have been higher, and it's not. So I'm glad to hear that the tax rate is lower than, than projected. The highway fund, they're doing a great job there, keeping that rate down. And of course, the fire department, tried and true. Boy, those guys are doing, men and women are doing great with their, with their nice steady level there. So I would look for a motion to approve this if one is forthcoming from the board.
I think a motion to approve that, the tax base.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I see a second from Jean Connor. Any further discussions from the board? Okay, math looks good to me. I'm going to ask you all to unmute yourselves. And when I say so, okay, Jim, thank you. And when I say so, please, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Stuart, tax rate is set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. We're going to move on to a, we're going to move on to the manager's report. I'm going to ask you, if you would, to pass on the PFOA update and the wastewater trans- the wastewater facility update and the pathway update, and just give us the SBC update. And I think then we'll move on to the, end of the, towards the end of the meeting place.
And I was planning to focus on that. But I would like to ask Dan to, to present that. He's been working closely with Merrill Bent over the last 24 hours. So we've had some changes in what's happening.
Yes, hi. Donald, can you hear me?
Yes, you sound good, Dan.
Okay, great. So as you, well, let's go back. We had, have had continuing noise complaints from the camp facility that's occupying the SBC campus. In response to that, the town did file for a temporary restraining order to, to limit that noise. We were granted that temporary restraining order by the judge. Basically, in a nutshell, said that there couldn't be no amplified sound after 9:00 PM. Unfortunately, that temporary restraining order was not complied with, and the town filed a motion for contempt of court, which we had scheduled for a hearing, I believe it was July 23rd. However, the town and the camp operators were able to come to an agreement, and we filed that with the judge a couple of days ago, Friday, I believe. Unfortunately, that particular stipulated, stipulated agreement was also violated even before it was signed by the judge. So where we are currently, we have filed another motion for contempt. We have withdrawn our agreement on the stipulated judgment, and we have a hearing scheduled for July 30th, where we'll be seeking a preliminary injunction to stop the noise from the campus. We'll have to see what the judge has to say, but we have witnesses, you know, prepared to testify, and hopefully the outcome is, is the way we'd like to see it. Obviously, the best outcome would be simply for the operators to stop making noise that's, that's bothering neighbors. But we're going to, we're going to seek a court, court order regardless of what happens between now and the hearing. So any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Board, I'm going to allow for some questions on this. I know that this has been a really hot topic, and we're going to start with Mr. Jim Carroll and then go to Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question goes to both Stu and Dan. I think it would be really important to cite the, the number of violations and how late they ran into the, not only the evening hours, but the morning hours. The town of Bennington has done everything they could to work cooperatively with this group, and they have absolutely defied our requests despite repeated assurances that they would. So Dan or Stu, would you please enumerate those complaints?
Here now?
Yes.
How about summarize the complaints?
There we go.
I'll look to you to do that. To whom? Dan, you're muted still.
Well, I'm looking to, I'm looking to Dan to do that. I don't have that in right front of me.
Okay, and neither do I, frankly. That's been filed with the court. Jim, all those complaints, all the police reports, all the, everything has been filed with the court. So the judge will be well aware of that.
We did get a fairly thorough document that included maps. I think it just came out fairly recently, but we did get the, the latest. Maybe I just, did I get it, Dan, or did the whole board get it?
The whole board got, has, has received all of the filings, including one that we, that was sent out today.
The one that went out today did have all those, maybe some of the highlights from that, unfortunately, or lowlights, you know, that the, I think the hardest one was the noise complaints that were happening after 1:00 in the morning.
Yes.
And that was certainly an egregious offense. It's one thing to have it be on the cusp of around 8:00, but the noise really went on.
You know, I, I will tell you this, that, and I've told other board members, I told other, yes. I've told other board members that I had an encounter with Mr. Pearlstein, who needed directions to the town office. And I said, well, just follow him. And he said, you know, I'm going to prove you guys wrong. We're going to be cooperative. And I said, well, Mr. Pearlstein, I hope you do prove us wrong. But, you know, the 1:00 in the morning violations of the ordinance are just not acceptable.
Now, we're going to let the courts take it from here. It's, it's not a fast process, right, Dan? I mean, even, so they've got supposedly a second group coming, is that right?
Well, it's actually, as far as the court is concerned, this, because these are temporary restraining orders and preliminary injunctions, they're pretty fast. And we already have the TRL, obviously it hasn't been complied with, but the preliminary injunction could be issued as soon as July 30, which is pretty quick when you're talking about courts, especially during the COVID area. Unfortunately, that leaves a couple more days where we won't have additional court order. But yes, the, the second camp has, has arrived. So the first, first three-week camp has ended, and the second three-week camp has begun.
So we're just going to have to ask everybody to stand by. We're doing what we can legally and still hoping that the camp will find a way to move the noise indoors into the gymnasium and not disrupt the neighborhood. So if that, that can happen, then we can all get along and things can work out.
And I would say, please, if you did, if you have legitimate noise complaints, please do let the police know so that we can document them. Obviously, we don't want anybody calling just for, you know, minor issues. But if there's, if there's noise coming from that campus that's disturbing your peace, your quality of life, please let the police know so that we can document those. I, I think there's a tendency for folks to maybe give up and say, oh, well, there's nothing that's going to happen. I promise you, we are working through the court system to address this issue. We're hoping that, that the camp operators get the message and, and comply without, you know, further court orders. But if necessary, we'll continue to seek the court orders.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's the update from SBC at this point. I would like, also in the sort of tabling of this, I would like to have this Bike Ped Projects update come to another meeting. There, you know, the Kosher Drive, Apple Gate, Ninja Trail, Bennington Rail Trail Pathway, and Benmont Avenue all have seen significant progress. It'd be great for people to know how much progress has been made and when things are going to actually start happening. But let's, let's put that to another meeting. I hate to do it, love those rail projects, but I think that we need to at this point. Jim, that is quarter of nine. So upcoming agenda, I'm going to more or less punt on this one. We, we have a number of items that we've pushed off. Had a couple of people that have reached out to us on the agenda items. We'll work to pull that together. But our, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on August 10th. If anyone has vacation plans, please let me know, because we do need to have a forum. And that, that actually goes for the rest of the year. But particularly during August. And don't forget about the August 5th, if I got that right, August 5th, meeting of the Vermont Partnership for Arts and Diversities, IACP work. Other business, I'd love to ask, I'm, I'm going to ask for other business, but I'd love to ask people to keep it very brief, if possible. Do any board members have anything that they'd like to enter into other business at this point? Okay, Jean, go ahead, and then Jim.
I just want to keep it on our radar. I really would love to see some board training. We could even do it on Zoom with Vermont League of Cities and Town.
Okay, that's great. Why don't you keep coordinating with the vice chair and me on that? We'll, we'll work with the town manager to work on that. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I just want to make my own personal remembrances about Bill Scully. You know, it's, it's just so sad. But Bill was always a bright light of optimism that all, that all things are possible if you're willing to step forward. Both Bill and his wife have loved Bennington and demonstrated that in many, many ways for many years. And I thank them both for everything that they've done for the town.
Well said, Jim. There's nobody that can say you don't have heart. Really appreciate those words. Sarah, go ahead.
Oh, and to end on a lighter note, just wanted to get this out. During COVID, I don't know if everybody knows, the chicken barbecue for the fire department is going out for Battle Day, August 14th, $10, and they are going to deliver it. I'll just put this up there if anybody can't see it.
Sounds good. That's right, we were expecting one of the agenda items for our next meeting is an update, right? From, from somebody. So keep in touch with me, Sarah, or with Jeannie about, about that. We'll make sure to work with Dan and Stuart to get it on the agenda. Okay, we are technically in, moving into public comment. There is nobody in the waiting room at this point, but it's so late that I feel a little bit like we may have outlasted people who might have wanted to be in the waiting room. I'd like this board to consider something that was suggested at our last meeting. Maybe we do a, a public, as long as we're on Zoom, which is not the ideal situation, but frankly, for health reasons is, is still, I think, the prudent way to go. As long as we're still on Zoom, we move to a citizens' comment period in the beginning. We'll have to keep it kind of time limited. And then we have an opportunity for citizens' comment at the end. And this is not a precedent that I would take into an in-person meeting, but it is something that I would be willing to consider during Zoom if the rest of the board feels like that might be a way to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to pound the table and find out who it is that is setting the agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. So I'm going to, I'm going to take, I'm going to take the heat for that, although I do have co-conspirators, and they're on the call, and they, they know who they are, but...
Sure, sure, let them fess off.
Back to me, it's not that. So I apologize for having a long meeting tonight, and I thank you all for hanging in there as long as, as you have. And so I'm sorry about this, but we're not going to end the meeting right now. I don't know why it happened like this, but all of a sudden, there were two people in the waiting room. So we are, we are in citizens' comment, in public comment. It is late, but whoever's in the, in the waiting room is going to get a chance to speak, and we're just going to have to wait a little bit longer. So bear with me, okay? So caller calling on the phone number ending in 840, we've entered you into the Bennington Select Board meeting, and I'd ask you at this point to turn down the volume on your, on your television or on your phone, and I will unmute you in just a second. And when I do, please give us your full name, first and last name, and your town, and tell us what's on your mind. I am going to ask you to be somewhat brief, since we are well over our, our, our time slot here, but we welcome your comments nevertheless. So caller ending in 840, you're in the meeting. Please tell us your name and give us your comments.
Yes, I'll be real quick. It's Sarah Shino again from Bennington. I couldn't help but notice that the DRB board meetings are, are held in person on the top floor. Dan Monks knows about this, and now they're easily spaced six feet apart. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering when select board members are going to start feeling comfortable about doing this. You know, I know we're still on caution, but I, I think it would be a lot easier instead of people trying to go through the phone prompt and call and the ID, even though tonight was very good for people calling in.
Yeah, I understand, Sam. And I think we're constantly making that balance too. It would feel a little better if we felt like we're heading in the right direction nationally on, on the COVID thing. It's difficult having the governor and everybody else around the country feeling like it's a time.
Maybe because the DRB meetings are so short and yours is so lengthy. Is that the one reason, the major cause?
There are a lot of different calculations in it. I, I, we're, so thank you. I'm just going to say, thank you, Sam.
I want you to go because I know it's only three hours. Have a good evening.
We know it's important to get these meetings in, in person soon, as soon as we all feel it's the safest thing for our community. So we're.
Well, you're doing great work the way it is, so.
Thank you. You're a good sport. All right. Take care.
Yeah, have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Okay. Caller ending in, in zero two five. I've just entered you into the Bennington Select Board meeting. I'm going to ask you to please turn down the volume on your television or your computer so that there's no interference with Cat TV. And when I unmute you in just a second, I'll ask you to please give us your full name, first and last name, and tell us where you're from and what's on your mind. So caller ending in zero two five. I've entered you into the Bennington Select Board meeting and please give us your name and tell us, tell us what you're thinking about.
Hi, this is Nancy White and I'm calling about the same thing that Sam just called about.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Hi, I'm calling about the same thing Sam called about.
Okay.
For the last couple of months, you've talked about finding alternative sites for meetings. Many of us in Bennington have gotten up and have gone to work every day with the public throughout the shutdown up until now. And I think it's very unfair that you continue to stay in your homes to run the meetings while many of the people you represent are getting up and going to work every day. I would not want anybody who is at a high risk to catch COVID to go to a public meeting, but I think we have the safest option available to do it at the firehouse. I asked at the last meeting how long you, we would have to wait. And Donald, I thought you said it would be two weeks. I, I just don't understand if we can leave all those doors open at the, at the firehouse. If people are going to be there in August all day for voting, I don't understand why you won't hold public meetings.
We're, we're continuing to reconsider it, Nancy, meeting by meeting. And yes, we are experimenting with using the lower bay of the firehouse for this August fifth meeting. If that goes well and people wear masks and the meeting is uninterrupted by health concerns, then that may be a precedent that we can continue to follow. So I'm not making any promises, but I will tell you it's a priority for us to, to make sure that we try to make these meetings available to people. It's just, there's, there are safety concerns. Like, you know, you know, from your profession, that there are many safety concerns that, that we have to balance. And so we're working, we're doing the best we can with that.
Well, again, and certainly I understand the safety concerns.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for lodging your comments and I, you know, I don't guarantee that we will have our next meeting in person, but we are continuing to consider it and we will work, we are working towards that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, Board, I'm going to say there's nobody else in the waiting room. I'm going to close public comment at this point. I apologize that we're being indefinite about the next meeting location, but I frankly want to keep watching the COVID numbers and keep watching the, the trend lines on things and see where our governor goes with, with his recommendations. The vice chair and I, in conjunction with town staff, will make the best decision we can. We recognize the importance of trying to get meetings open in, in public as soon as, as it's safe and we will continue to try to strike that balance. Hope that's good enough for everybody. Okay. If we don't close this meeting quickly, it's going to be nine o'clock. And so Stuart's laughing. He probably needs dinner. Other people probably need dinner at this point. And I would really seriously now look for a motion to adjourn. Very much. I'm going to take a second from Bruce. All in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are out of session. Thank you very much, Bennington, for sticking with us tonight. Interesting, difficult discussion. Onto the next. We'll see you on August tenth, if not before.
Hey, folks.
Thanks. Bye.